Everyone, it is Thursday, October 26th at 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the Clearlake City Council meeting into order. Redevelopment Assessment Agency. Now, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Overton?
Here.
Councilmember Bennett?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sabatini?
Here.
And Mayor Kerdoff?
Here. Councilmember Harris, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. If you'd please remain standing. Pastor Chris from Church Nazarene would like to give our invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Our Holy Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together and voice our opinions in the democracy that we live in. Thank you for this council. Thank you for the good that they do and their willingness to serve. We ask your wisdom and a sense of like-mindedness this evening. Let us share ideas and let the business of Clearlake be done and let it be a glory to you. And we ask these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. If you see them. Moving on, Mr. Folsom, do you have any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor, no changes.
Do I have a motion to drop the agenda?
So moved. Seconded.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Moving on to presentations. Glad to see several people in the House. Congress, would you like to join me down in the floor?
We're humbled. We're a little bit emotional and we're very touched to be here together as a community. We've been through a lot in the past couple of weeks and the city council wanted to come together and thank each of those, our first responders, those at the state level, those at the federal level, who have come to our aid and helped us and will continue to help us through this disaster. I heard for the first time this morning, and it was repeated again tonight at the earlier meeting, that the level of devastation from this event in these past couple of weeks is equal to or similar to that horrible earthquake of 1906 that took out San Francisco and a lot of northern California. This, of course, wasn't an earthquake. It was a wildfire, but the level of devastation and now the populations that exist in those areas, it's just, it breaks your heart for all those that are hurting right now and those that are still displaced. So with that somber tone, we really want to commend and thank the first responders. So I'd like to read this. Commending the first responders of the sulfur fire incident. An appreciation and gratitude from the City of Clearlake City Council on behalf of the citizens of Clearlake. Whereas on October 8th, 2017, at 11:59 PM, a fire broke out near Highway 20 and Silverbank Road. Whereas that fire grew quickly to 2,207 acres, causing evacuations of thousands of residents and threatening thousands of homes in the city of Clearlake and County of Lake. Whereas many agencies, including the Clearlake Police Department, Cal Fire, Lake County Fire, Protection District, Lakeport Police Department, California Highway Patrol, California State Parks, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, Lilic County District Attorney's Office, and the Lake County Sheriff's Office responded quickly to confront the incident. Whereas it is important to fully recognize the scale and scope of this emergency response because it demonstrates so clearly the skill, expertise, and proficiency our local emergency responders hold, along with their courage, resolve, and heroism. Let it be proclaimed that the City of Clearlake City Council and the entire community does hereby acknowledge and sincerely thank those who responded to the call duty on October 8th, 2017. The Lake County Sheriff's Office is to be committed for their commitment to serving the citizens of Clearlake, and we are so grateful to all of you. Thank you so much. If you're in your neighborhood often, come to us. This is obviously just a handful of the hundreds that responded, thousands perhaps.
Sure.
Yeah, there are definitely hundreds.
What a challenging time we've been in. This is politically, environmentally, sociologically, is one of the most challenging times for law enforcement and first responders. There have been countless acts of heroism that tales will never be told, except amongst those that have performed them. You have men here, you have men and women out in the streets, as we speak, responding in this very instant to very devastating and tragic things. I'm proud to be a part of this group. I'm proud to be a part of this team that protects our community, and thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, sir. If you weren't aware, crime still goes on even when you're fighting the fires and helping in the medical emergencies and all those things, and those people still need to handle those beats and take those calls for service. So thank you.
And if we can just pass out some pins, I'll let you guys hand these out to our first responders. And we have some for those who didn't make it tonight. That is an official Clearlake City pin. The chief probably has a dozen at home, but...
No, actually, you can give it to your wife. Anyway, it's always fun to make light when you can. Again, we just can't thank these gentlemen and their families that give them up for the time that they're out there serving. I think there was a couple of firefighters, chiefs paid it, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think they saw home for 72 hours, even maybe longer than that.
Definitely.
Who destroyed that fire. So is there anything you'd like to share?
Sure. Home is open for inspection.
Now, you know, as a chief, being the incident commander, it's really the easiest part of the job to sit here and orchestrate things and then really have to handle the guys in the field. The chief has to know everything about the staff, and I think the sheriff and the police chief will commend and agree with me. We weren't out there in the flames and dealing with the carnage. They were, and really, they were the ones that deserve the praise. My success is based off my staff, and my heart goes off to them because these past just three years, not the six years I've been chief, but just the last three years, these guys are just amazing. I would follow them to the gates of nowhere, anytime, so I'm very proud of them.
I don't want to give anybody else. This is an opportunity.
So I absolutely reiterate what the chiefs and the sheriffs have said. Our staff was out there from the moment they got the call, and they were in there trying to get people out of their homes and evacuating those folks, and there was a concern by me specifically that some of them were going to get trapped in the fires, and they still stayed in the battle and still made sure, and we can honestly tell you that we have no loss of life in our fire, in the sulfur fire, and it's because of those boots on the ground that we're there and the messages that went out and the teamwork from all of our departments. You have a great crew working for you, and I'm so very proud to be a part of this group and our community. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. I welcome you to stick around for the rest of the meeting. It's pretty exciting.
I'm just kidding.
Thank you all. Absolutely, Nick. Councilmember Bennett pointed out, and I would like to reiterate because I saw them out there and I still see them out there, working throughout the weekend, our code enforcement staff. Mr. Folsom, sir, you have been fantastic. We wanted to thank those from outside our city, but the council also recognizes the hours that you have all put in. From the finance and our city clerk, and of course Lieutenant Sully and everyone, we really appreciate it. And public works, yeah, I thought I mentioned that. I've never seen so much waddle strung out along a street. I didn't even know what wad was, other than what I got abducted. But there's a lot of it down, trying to protect the hillsides and keep contaminants from going into the lake and water resources and all the other county agencies. The list just goes on and on, so we are truly grateful. And thank you, Nick, for pointing that out. All right, well, presentations are fun. Now we're going to get on to public comment. Also can be some fun. Public comment is a time where you can address the council on any item not currently on our agenda. If you'd like to speak about something that's on the agenda, you need to hold it until we bring that item up for discussion. Currently, I have no public comment cards or items not on the agenda, but at this time I'd like to open it up. Anyone who'd like to address the council on a non-adjented item, you're welcome to do so now. You have up to three minutes to speak to us on a topic of your choice. Just remember, we can't answer you, we can't respond to your questions or comments, we just basically have to sit here and take it. So if you'd like, come on up. This is your chance to address us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. I want to commend the city and especially code enforcement. Recently, and I live in the Lakeshore Village, my name's Richard Bean, by the way. I live in Lakeshore Village area, and right at the entrance to the Lakeshore Village on Ridgeview and Old Highway 53, there was a car that was dumped there probably three or four weeks ago, and it got destroyed. Vandalism and graffiti, obscene graffiti was sprayed all over it, and I called the city to see about it. Anybody noticed this horrible blight on our city? And I'm glad to say that that was taken care of, and car was removed, and that intersection looks decent again. I just want to appreciate the code enforcement and the job that they're doing, especially with vehicle abatement, because we have a lot of abandoned cars that are still in Clearlake. And I just wanted to thank you for that.
Let me thank you for that. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council? Seeing none on closed public comment, move on to our consent agenda. Any changes to the consent agenda, Mr. Folsom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Any requests for change or have an item pulled by council? I'll open it for the public. Anyone wishing to discuss or hear an item that's currently on the consent agenda, please step forward and identify that. Seeing none, I will bring it back to council for action.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda submitted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now we're moving on to item number eight, which is a public, which is a public hearing to consider confirmation of assessments in total amount of $32,500 for administrative penalties for failure to abate public nuisances in accordance to the CMC codes listed.
I've hurt your eyes. Well, listen, I'm a safety officer and I'm telling her not to make a move. Standing on a chair, which is probably not supposed to be.
Mayor, is this...
Yeah, so she's going to actually...
Thank you, Mr. Beckhams, for not injuring yourself. Mr. Folsom, would you like to give a report or delegate it to someone else?
At this point, I'm happy to introduce our code enforcement staff.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody who wants to see something?
Purpose of this hearing is to consider and act upon any and all protests of proposed assessments for recovery of the costs of administrative penalties for future for failure to abate public nuisances. Upon consideration of the evidence of testimony, council may grant the protest and revise the resolution to remove the assessments or deny the protest and confirm the assessments as proposed, or modify or reduce the amount of the assessments, and revise the resolution to reflect the modified assessments. The property owners were given notice of the violations and adequate time to voluntarily correct the violations. The property owners failed to abate public nuisances and on the said property within the prescribed time. Property owners, okay. Property owners were given notice of their right to appeal the imposition of administrative penalties. The property owners failed to submit in writing a notice of appeal of administrative penalties within the prescribed time allowed. Attached to this staff report is the proposed resolution confirming assessment, statement of expenses for the proposed assessment and supporting evidence. Staff recommends that council confirm all assessments as proposed. Property number one is 4317 Old Highway 53. Owner is James E. T. Trewick, trustee. The penalty is $7,500. This property is in violation of several CMC codes. And I was the sighting officer. The original pictures were taken on 12/19/2016. These pictures are the interior of the home. These are the exterior. It was red tagged on that date also. The current pictures as of today, I wasn't able to get inside the house, but this is the outside. Okay, this is the outside. I was not able to get inside, and I don't have any contact with anybody. I did have contact, sorry, there's a fly. I did have contact with somebody, but then I haven't heard anybody. I think the owner is in a home, so somebody was trying to step in and help advocate, you know, the cleanup, but I haven't heard from anybody in the last at least 60 days.
Thank you, officer. Any questions, Dan?
Has any of the outside been cleaned up at all?
No.
Vice Mayor?
When was that contact made originally?
A little over 90 days ago.
And there's nothing to believe that the interior has changed, just like the exterior has not changed, yeah?
No.
Very good. Is anyone present tonight to speak to us about this particular effect of patient? I will open up the public hearing for this purpose. Anyone wishing to address council, this is your time to do so. Seeing none, I will bring it back to council. Vice Mayor, you have a question?
Yes, this is our first time assessing this property. If we approve the assessment or has this been a, has this had some history?
I don't believe it's been assessed before.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion? Let's do all. Property two?
Property two was 3130 13th Street. The owner is Dylan and Debbie Stiles. The penalty is $2,500. They were in violation of several CMC codes, and I was the sighting officer. The original pictures were taken on January 25th, 2017.
Just one moment. I'm going to recuse myself. Thank you.
So real quick, Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
To recuse yourself. We need to stay on the record, the basis for it, please.
This has been a personal friend. I was a child, so I don't want to have to go on. Thank you.
The current pictures taken as of yesterday and today, you'll see that the owners have cleared the violations.
So you satisfied that we should remove this from?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Jones, can we bring Mr. Hearsman?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Property number three is 15170 Lakeview Avenue. The owner is Gerald and Lois Toller. The administrative penalty assessment is $2,500. They were in violation of several CMC codes, and I was the sighting officer. The original pictures were taken on 12/14, 2000, should say 2016. Originally, they had a fencing issue. This is technically supposed to be a vacant parcel because there is no dwelling on it, and they have items on the parcel that should not be there. The current picture was taken today, 10/26/17. They have some weed, overgrown vegetation issues. Truck is still there.
Can we go back to the first picture?
This was the first one.
Okay, so help me to understand, this is alongside of that utility trailer or cargo trailer?
Yes. There are items stored behind the fence.
Okay.
That should not be there. And then the garage should technically be taken down. However, I looked at my citation, I did not cite them for that. I just cited them for the items that were stored on the property and the vehicles and the utility trailer.
So if I'm understanding, this is supposed to be a vacant lot?
Correct, because I did double check with the assistant planner, and yes, because there is no dwelling on the house, on the property, it is designated as a vacant parcel, and the garage should also be taken down.
And the next picture. So this is just stepping back a little bit closer to the street?
Yes.
And the next picture. So that's on the opposite side of the garage?
Yes, everything else has been taken off. I did have contact with the owner, Lois Toller, a little over 30 days ago. Both Julie Burrows and I spoke with her. We did inform her that everything needed to be removed, and she needed to check into the process for demoing the garage. She was not receptive to that, and that was the only contact, and she said she wasn't going to contact us anymore.
Okay, is there any other solutions that were offered to her?
I was fine with just removing the vehicles, keeping the property maintained, if it was a financial reason that the garage was still there. However, she, again, was not receptive.
Okay, I was wondering if you could merge the lots, is that allowed?
She just owns this one parcel.
Oh, she doesn't want to join the lot?
To my knowledge, no.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
Actually, that was one of my questions. We're looking at one whole parcel, not separate parcels put together.
Correct.
And my other question is, how did a garage end up in a place where there's no home?
I believe, I believe there was a home at one point in time. What happened to it, I don't know the history.
Was the garbage that was behind the fence, has it been removed?
Yes.
So let me say, if there was a house on the property and something happened to the house, say burned or whatever, are they required to tear the garage down also? I mean...
If the house is in...
I mean, if there was a house existing to start, but when they built the garage, then I mean, it's not really in my mind.
So if a house burned down or was not done on the property, the property owner would have nine months to submit plans for a new build. If they didn't, then you have the property would need to be torn down to the, to bare land.
Any other questions? Is there someone here to represent the property owner or the property owner themselves? Please step forward. So you want to bring back your counsel? Any other questions? Very good. Next item.
Property number four is 5289 County Avenue. The owner is Clint Mitchell, trustee. The penalty was $5,000. They were in violation of several CMC codes, and I was the sighting officer. The original pictures were taken on 11/24/2015. As of today, these are the pictures. The property, the violations have been cleared.
Okay, so what's your pleasure on property four? Want us to remove that?
Yes, please.
All right.
Property number five is 5835, while he can place. The owner is John Critchlow. The assessment penalty is $2,500. They were in violation of several CMC codes, and I was the sighting officer. The original pictures were captured on 12/29/2015. And this is the picture from today. The violations have been cleared, and I would recommend removing it. Property number six is 2875, Old Highway 53. The owner is Charlene L. Smith, and the assessment penalty is $5,000. They were in violation of several CMC codes, and I was the sighting officer. The original pictures were captured on 5/10/2017. And these are the pictures from today. They made minimal, minimal progress with no contact.
Okay, can we go back?
Absolutely.
Just so we're all seeing the same violations, what did you point about?
Kind of in front of the doorway and underneath the kitchen window, there's a pile of something, stuff, debris. In front of the garage, some progress has been made, but there's still a pileup of something, and that car I do not believe runs. I don't believe it's operable. And then, yes, that's, that's it. They did cut the leaves down, though. That's it. They did cut the leaves down though.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions, Ms. Taylor? Is there anyone present tonight that would like to write testimony on this property? It's your time to do so.
Mr. Mayor, how's my person?
I just have a...
From Clearlake? Jeff Smith from Clearlake. I just want to let you know that I have received on this piece of property numerous complaints myself because of certain reasons. I would receive those comments. And it's something that is, in that neighborhood, has really made a a real negative impact in that particular neighborhood. So, I think there's been lots of times that this person has been contacted. Lots of neighbors have talked to them and everything else. I just, the last few months, still receive complaints on it. So, I knew they was going through the process, so I just wanted to let you know that, you know, this person really needs to be let known that it's not going to be tolerated.
Appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Dave Hughes, and I live down the street. I'm one of the people that's complained to Jeff Smith and the city. I do have to say, there was a car there for a couple of years up on blocks with no tires. I think that's been removed now. It's, to us, it's still an ongoing problem. The weeds, the septic tank is backed up. I've followed up with this health department on that one. Their dog got loose, killed one of my chickens, my wife's chickens, I should say. The dog was put down. Personally, I think the wrong animal was put down. They should have been instead of the dog, but... That's the way I feel. I mean, they have been a problem. I have personally talked to Charlene in the past. I don't even think she lives there now and she has a home she purchased on a county program. She shouldn't have bought the house anyway, but that's done. But I, I'm going to be talking to the board of supervisors because she should be living in the home and we don't think she is. So, it, she has been an ongoing problem. The neighbors have their house for sale and the first comment from the realtors when they did a tour was, "How are you gonna sell this house with the stuff next door?" So I would agree with Jeff. She needs to be informed that, you know, we're not gonna tolerate it and we shouldn't tolerate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I need, I mean, right now, we're talking about code enforcement violation in the pictures right now. I'm hearing that there's problems at the house. Please, code enforcement officer, can you please give me more reasons why there is an issue? Because the issue here, compared to some of the homes that we've seen, seems minimal. Maybe the pictures don't give it justice. Is it a human issue rather than a code enforcement issue that we're talking about? Because I'm, I'd like to understand a little bit better as to why... It seems like there's a neighborhood issue, obviously coming from the two gentlemen that came up and testified, but as a code enforcement situation that I'm seeing right now, can you describe more what I'm not seeing? Because I'm not seeing it.
Well, they have complied with some of, some of the stuff, but not fully. And they have not contacted me to make arrangements or to say, "Hey, what do I have left?" So, that's why we're here. There are still issues as far as code enforcement. The neighborhood issues is out of my realm. But I do know there, you know, I did go out with Chief Sully there one time and talked to, I think it was a nephew or a son, or older son, or whatever it was. But nobody has ever contacted me as far as the owner of the home to say, "Hey, you know, can I pull this is right?" Or, or "What else can I do?" So that's why we're here, because a violation is a violation.
And I just, I've been to the house. I went out, wanted to look at it. And no offense, but I don't know if the pictures really bring out the violations. I don't know if the lighting is wrong or it doesn't really, but the debris is there. We have had complaints. I've also fielded complaints at that property. More than just the neighborhood, so.
Mr. Mayor, if, I think Chief Sully may have a comment to add to this.
I saw his hand bouncing up. I just haven't gotten over there yet. Yes, Chief?
Thank you. Yes, that is correct. I have gone out to the property with Ms. Vermoni's and we've personally spoken to the occupants there. The pictures do not do this property justice. There's been vehicles on blocks. There's been weeds as tall as I am. There is animals running around. My officers responded to this location numerous times to deal with some of the other violations that are going on that are not of a code enforcement nature. And I have spoken recently, within the last month, with neighbors of the property and there was still... The pictures do not do it justice. There is some cleanup that has taken place, probably because of the actions of code enforcement. So I just wanted to reiterate that. I have personally seen this property and it is, it is a problem for the neighborhood and we've fielded numerous complaints. As a matter of fact, we've responded to community meetings with the neighbors and trying to pull together our ideas to address this problem.
Thank you for your input. Is there anyone wishing to, oh, sorry, Councilmember Harris, you have a question?
Well, just, I will reiterate the same thing. I've fielded complaints about this particular location myself and I have seen it with my own eyes and absolutely, it's an ongoing issue. And even if it, from this picture, you're not seeing, clearly not seeing the entire gravity of the situation, but it is a major eyesore for the community and it's an ongoing issue. I think part of what we're trying to accomplish here is, we're seeing here, many of these people are taking action and trying to improve their, their home, which improves the community and improves everything in our, in our entire community. And when we have somebody like this that's a glaring example of a continued, ongoing issue and causing disruption in our communities, this is exactly what we're trying to solve is these problems here. So I think this is an absolute, absolute example of something that we need to and absolutely, they have to take action on it. One thing that I would recommend is that to the neighbors of the, to this particular home, that you take the proper action, legal action. So there are, obviously, there's recourse for you in the civil way and I would, I would highly recommend taking that action. I know of some people who have gone this direction and it's been very successful. So a lot of times, that changes things almost instantaneously as soon as that, that process starts. So, thank you.
I'd like to open it up. Is there anyone here wanting to write testimony on this property, others than those who have spoken so far? Very well, I'll bring you back. And the next item.
Okay. Property number seven is 13672 Arrowhead Road. The owner is William Reese Smith. The administrative penalty is $7,500. This property is in violation of several CMC codes. I was not originally the sighting officer, Lee Lambert was, but I took over several months ago. This property is actually red-tagged too. The original pictures were taken on 9/29/2015.
It's worse.
These are the interior pictures. Pictures from today, 10/26/2017. I was not able to access the interior and the exterior pictures don't reflect the way it is if you were to drive by.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to address counsel in front of this property, please step forward.
I can't pass up this one because I drive by it all the time. And I just hope the next step is, this entire place needs to be demolished. And so, as most of us know and have seen this going for well before the date that this was actually red-tagged, that it needs to proceed and take the next step to get this out of the neighborhood that could be really nice. This sits right in the middle of it. And if, all this stuff like this hurts your tax dollars because it's, it's made properties around it devalue. And the sooner we get this stuff cleaned up, the sooner we're gonna realize higher tax revenue and that's what the city needs. So, I hope this action and more actions are taken pretty quickly.
So you're in favor?
Yeah. Summarized with...
Vice Mayor?
Wanted to ask if this was the first time that we've gotten to the assessment portion of this, for this property?
I believe so. The, I did have contact with a bank for several months. I did try to work with the bank because they were trying to decide whether they were gonna demo it or if they were gonna rehab it. And then, about two weeks ago, I got a call from Chase Bank and they said they were writing it off, so they didn't want anything to do with it anymore. So that's why it's going now versus before.
What? So we can allow a bank to just dump it on us and make it our problem instead of their problem? Thank you. Can we send the violation to the bank?
I tried.
Any other comments? Alright. That's our last item?
Yes.
Last call. Anyone else wishing to make comment? This is your chance. Very well, I'd like to motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close?
I want a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Very well. Any further deliberation or any...
With regard to Councilmember Harris's conflict, I don't believe that one's gonna be it was already discussed, so I don't have an issue with any deliberations here.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to make, make a motion to act on items one, three, six, and seven and to approve resolution 2017-83 to nine, the appeal. In accordance with CMC sections 18-9.110, 18-9.120, 18-9.130, and 18-10. And that's the term? Did I say this right?
You're actually gonna be confirming assessments, not denying an appeal?
Oh, excuse me. I was like, reading the wrong thing.
2017-82. This is actually item number...
So let's table, let's table out a motion and we'll correct it. Vice Mayor, you have a comment?
Yeah, can we go back to the first property? I'm trying to think of something that we're bringing back to our council, which is potentially reducing the, I guess it may not matter if that's the case, but of reducing the assessments for somebody who purchased through a tax auction, if they fixed all of the issues, that's coming back to us at one point. However, I'm looking at a property here that doesn't seem to be valued much and adding $7,500 on top of that might make it a loss where somebody will not want to buy it with the extra $7,500 attached. And I'm looking to see if maybe possibly that might look to be reduced. It just seems steep for that, that type of property. The first prop? No, because that property has a really nice view and it would be valued at a much higher... If it's gonna be sellable or not. Again, if you can't sell it because it's valued at too high because you have too many fines against it, then it's gonna stay the same for too long.
But now, we have something that's gonna be brought back to us on this issue already.
Yeah, we're working on something that's not ready yet.
But it's still, the initial reaction of somebody purchasing a home.
Which property?
This property just...
What was the address of that property again?
317 Old Highway 53.
It's just, it's on a main thoroughfare, so the value already is, is decreased from not being in a cranny or nook of our residential areas. It's gonna require it to be demoed. It's just the cost for somebody to wanna come and, and take this piece of property and turn it around, just adding $7,500 instead of maybe $2,500 or $5,000 seems more appropriate than $7,500 on a property that I don't think is even worth $7,500. I just don't want to trap us.
I have a question for Mr. Beck now. If we assess the property at that rate, can we, currently, is there a method in place to reduce the penalties to help with the sale? In other words, if they bid below the assessed penalties?
Well, it's... The answer to your question is, no, there's not a way for us to do it, but as a practical matter, now the tax default sale, what the county assessor would do is they would set the sale price to cover the taxes that are due, including the assessments. The reality is that if in fact, their minimum bid is lower and they decide to accept that, then the property taxes would get paid first and the assessment would not get paid. And whatever amount did not get covered would get wiped out for the sit... So, my comment on that is I would, I would hate to see the council sit here and kind of get into a guessing game about the potential value of the properties and monkey with the assessment based on what might be an expectation of the value of the property at some point in the future. The assessor, you know, if a property doesn't sell at the tax default sale the first time through, they put it back up, they're likely going to reduce the minimum bid price to below what the combined total of the property taxes and the assessments are to, to move the property. Which means the city would end up not exceeding that amount anyway. So what I'm saying is, let, let the system kind of
Let the system work.
Do that rather than try and short circuit and do it right up.
But if the value was set at less and the minimum bid would be lower for the first time around, would it that help our city to sell those properties at a faster pace potentially? Where that can then be rectified or somebody actually decides to care for the property rather than the property staying and remaining exactly as is until we have the funds to do an abatement ourselves?
In theory, yes. And I, I guess my response to that is, a salesman will always tell you that they can sell more product if you just, if you just lower the price. And I think that rather than try and sell the product as, as it is, rather than taking the easy way out by arbitrarily lowering the price, I think we ought to just let the price be what it is. And if in fact, the market comes back and says, "No, it's not worth that because we received low bids on it", then let's make the decision at that point rather than make the decision now. Because in fact, the value of the property, the value of the property could increase. And if you, if you reduce the assessment now and the value of the property for some reason does increase, then you can never recover that assessment. If you had to reassess it at that point, we would have lost that.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. I appreciate your feedback. Mr. Harris?
Yeah, I think our primary objective here is to increase property values across the board. I think that a lot of what we're doing here, especially with these assessments, is, is in regards to that plight. So, I would hope that at some point, when we get to the, the spot where these properties actually do hold some merit and somebody sees the value and taking that place down and putting up a brand new house, that's one of the things. So, I guess if we were to anticipate no property value rise over the next few years, then we might be looking like that. But I'm, I'm hopeful. I'm actually seeing where we're headed right now and I think that we're seeing some gain, gain in our values. And I think that these pieces of property that we're negotiating right now are actually gonna have a value and not that far in the future. So I'm ready to correct my motion whenever.
I agree, Councilmember, and I, I appreciate your input. I saw... I saw a burned-out house on Olive 53 that's been turned around and revitalized, and because of these actions, and I think, I think we owe a great debt to our code enforcement officers and the ones who are doing for helping us do that. Mr. Bennett?
To go off Councilman Harris's statement, out of seven properties tonight, we had three violations, and that speaks well of the way the properties, we're making as a city and our code enforcement activities.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Very welcome. Do we have a motion? Let's try again.
Yeah, sorry about that. So anyways, I'd like to make a motion on items one, three, six, and seven to adopt resolution 2017-82, resolution the city accounts the city clearly, confirming special assessments consisting of administrative penalties for failure to abate public nuisances above, above lien against real properties in accordance with sections 1-5, 1-9, 1-1, 10-1.6, 10-1.7, 10-1.9, 10-1.12, 10-2.2B, 10-2.4, 10-2.5, 10-2.6, 10-2.7, 10-2.8, 10-3.1, 10-3.3, 10-5, 10-5.6 of the city municipal code.
I have a motion in a second by Councilmember Overton. Can we have a roll call though, please?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Perdah?
Aye. Thank you very much. Moving on to public hearing, to hear and act upon an abatement order appeal hearing referencing real properties located at 15602 30th Avenue in Clearlake, California, 95422, in accordance with Clearlake Municipal Code sections 18-9.110, 18-9.120, 18-9.130, and 18-10 in its entirety.
Mr. Folsom?
Thank you, Mayor. While we introduce our code enforcement staff.
Okay, the purpose of each hearing, consider and act upon any and all appeals proposed in the abatement order. Upon consideration of the evidence and testimony, council may grant the appeal and adopt a resolution to allow the cultivation of marijuana or deny the appeal and adopt a resolution of holding the abatement order for cultivation of marijuana and direct the owner to abate the public nuisance. All legal and required documents were sent via U.S. standard and certified mail, as well as posted on the property. Property owner and/or responsible person filed an appeal in a timely manner. Attached to each staff report are the proposed resolutions confirming or denying said appeal. Staff recommends that the council deny each said appeal. Should the council or the appellant wish to address me as a sighting officer, I'm available and willing to respond to questions. First one is 15602 30th Avenue. The owner is Regina Danbridge, and the appellant is the same. There was multiple violations, and I was the sighting officer. This is a picture taken, can't see the date. I believe it's September 25th, 2017. And this was the current picture today, and marijuana is gone. Recommended, recommended action is motion to deny the appeal and adopt resolution number 2017-83 and read it by title only.
Is my understanding the violation was removed?
Yes, sir.
That they didn't have a permit, right?
They didn't have a permit? Okay. Did you have a comment, sir?
Yeah, I was going to say that you still want to deny the appeal, but fine.
Or you recommend that?
Very good. Is there anyone here wishing to address council on this item? Please step forward. We are opening a public hearing, so you have time to testify. See if you know one that will bring it back. Any other questions, the staff?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 2017-83, denying the appeal.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion in a second. Second. I have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I will renew my motion to approve resolution number 2017-83, denying the appeal for property located at 15602 30th Avenue, Clearlake, California, in accordance with CMC sections 18-9.110, 18-9.120, 130, and 10 in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call though?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Perdah?
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to item 10, public hearing to hear and act upon an abatement order appeal hearing referencing real property located at 15902 39th Avenue in Clearlake, 95422, in accordance with Clearlake Municipal Code sections 18-9.110, 18-9.120, and 18-9.130, and 18-10 in its entirety.
Okay, the address is 159...
Sorry. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, the address is 15902 39th Avenue. The owner is Narbo Lopez, and the appellant is the same. There was multiple violations, and I was the sighting officer. This was the picture taken on September 25th, 2017. And this is the picture today. The marijuana is gone. Recommended, recommended action is motion to deny the appeal and adopt resolution number 2017-84 and read it by title only.
Time to open this public hearing. Anyone wishing to offer testimony on this property, please step forward and do so. Question? Mr. Hughes?
Is there a penalty that goes with these denials?
Mr. Folsom?
So there's like a monetary...
Yes, it's a $500 fine. And banned for cultivation of the next year.
And then if there's another cultivation, does the fine go up?
In the same year.
That's what I thought. Okay, I just wanted to make sure there was some penalty.
Jeff Smith today, Clearlake. I'm glad I came tonight. You know, when you look at a cultivation like that, and of course it's gone, you wonder where it went? To the landfill? $500 is nothing. I thought at one point we were going to do a per-plant fine, and not a little slap on the wrist. And, you know, two violations in one year? So next year, the, the fine again is $500 for, for a crop that's valued at a guesstimate?
The, the penalties do increase. The penalties are $1,000 per plant if we go out and serve the warrant.
And they can't grow again next year, am I correct?
Correct. They weren't supposed to grow this year, were they?
No, this was the first year they were caught. So if they are caught again next year, it's a one-year ban, so they cannot grow next year. If they're caught, it's automatically a $1,000 fine per plant.
Well, it's a one-year ban if they come forward and ask for a permit. That's the frustration, Mr. Smith, and that's one of the things we have to deal with in allowing process to, to go through. We have to notice it.
So they weren't, they weren't supposed to grow it this year, and they did?
No.
This is the first, this is the first time on this property.
This is the first violation on this property.
If I may, I believe that there is a plan to approach those who are banned from growing in the following season to ensure that they know that they are not allowed and that they will be watched as well for, for that. Please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Lambert.
That's correct.
And I like that proactive approach. That way we can make sure that, because I agree that it's just a slap on the wrist for something that they're running to the bank with right now, unfortunately.
Thank you all. Anyone else wishing to offer testimony on this, on this property violation? Very well. I have a motion to close.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
A motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously. Further deliberation or any action?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 2017-84, denying the appeal on real property located at 15902 39th Avenue in Clearlake for CMC section codes as listed below.
I have a motion in a second by Councilmember Overton. Can we have a roll call though?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Perdah?
Aye. Thank you very much. We'll be moving to our business section. Item number 11, considering, consideration of second reading of commercial cannabis ordinance number 200-2010, pardon, correction, 200-2017, and ordinance number 201-2017, admitting the marijuana dispensary ordinance.
Mr. Folsom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we did talk about this at our last meeting. This is the second reading, so these are the highlights of ordinance 200-2017. It will create a commercial cannabis business overlay zone. One of the things that had come out previously out of, was that out of the, now I'm forgetting? Was that from the planning commission? No, that was here last night.
Right, it was here last time.
Right. So we removed Provenzalia, which is the southeast Clearlake-specific plan area. This ordinance does allow up to 12 cannabis business use permits. We do not allow, proposal is not to allow all the chemical extraction methods. It would create general operating requirements, provides guidance and discretion to the planning commission in establishing conditions of approval. The penalty for violating the use permit or regulatory permit is up to $1,000 per day with no cap, and a development agreement would be required. The highlights of the second ordinance, which is 201-2017, would allow delivery dispensaries without storefronts, and it changes the zoning to allow in-CV overlay zone only. There were some questions with regard to our explanation of the sales tax last time, so I just want to clarify how that works. As I mentioned previously, Clearlake will receive the sales tax to the extent allowed by law, so just to clarify that. California uses what's called a modified origin system, where customers are taxed based on the location of the business as opposed to that of the consumer, except for add-on transits, transaction taxes. So like our Measure V, our Measure P, those are add-on transaction taxes. Regulation 1699, the place of sale for local sales tax purposes for orders placed on the internet would be in the jurisdiction where the employee who receives the order is located. So that would be here in Clearlake. Those doing deliveries must be W-2 employees, not 1099 contract employees, and that will be required in the development agreement. As I mentioned, add-on transaction taxes like Measure P and Measure B do not apply to out-of-district transactions, which are subject to their own add-ons. So if it's going to Napa County or something, then our Measure P and Measure B, that won't be included, but we would get the regular sales tax. And then the development agreement would require that any telephone order desk be located in the city of Clearlake to make sure that the order, where it's taken is, would be Clearlake. And then those are some pictures of the zoning map. And our recommendation is to hold the second reading of the ordinance number 200-2017 and ordinance number 201-2017, read by title only, wait for the reading, and adopt the ordinance. And that was my part.
Thank you, Mr. Folsom. Any questions, the staff?
I just want to clarify something.
Please.
Okay, so if I understand this right, somebody from Napa purchases something from here, we get the sales tax, not Napa?
Correct. Unless they have their own add-on taxes.
Okay, so then they would have their add-on taxes would have to be added on here. Well, that's going to be very confusing for these people.
Yeah, but retailers do that all the time. So it's nothing different.
Imagine if you're in the city where Amazon landed.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So if we're selling, so if they're transporting to another area, also those sales taxes still come to us?
What do you mean transporting?
I mean, are they going to be, if they're distributing out to a different area?
Well, just to clarify the language, distribution is a different type of thing. So delivering, you mean, are they delivering for, and sale? Then yes, that's our sales tax. When you're talking about distribution, that's a wholesale operation, which is not taxed.
Right. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Bennett?
Is this going to be one vote for both ordinances or two?
Okay, thank you. Very good. Any other questions? I'm going to open it up. I'd like to open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council on this item, please step forward. We did have a request for public comment on this by the inhabitant. If you're present, this would be the time to make your comment. Yes, sir. Mr. Bean?
Yes, sir. Clearly, from Clearlake, longtime resident here. I, I first of all, just want to say that I really am supportive of the city council and everything that's been done in the last year or two that has really moved our city forward, and I want to commend you all. I fully support what the city council's been doing. With all due respect to the ad hoc committee in formulating the ordinance, I do have some, some comments that I hope you'll consider. We just saw a presentation on the sales tax issue, which I thought was good. Goal number five of the city's strategic plan is to ensure fiscal sustainability in the city. And so I wonder what the projected financial analysis is on this ordinance? How was it scored? Does the city know how much prospective tax revenue are going to be coming in? What the total tax revenue is? Does the city know what the expenses as far as the cost of services to monitor and enforce the ordinance and what that cost is? And is there going to be a surplus on that exchange? Is the city going to break even? Is there going to be a deficit? And so I just ask you to consider it. To score this ordinance through a financial analysis, if that hasn't been done, and I don't appear that it hasn't, that you do that. The second issue is zoning. And I know we looked at the map, and there's a sprinkle and a dotting of different zoning areas that are allowable for cannabis use. And I know we're talking about commercial cultivation, cannabis manufacturing, cannabis distributing, cannabis testing laboratories, cannabis nursery, and cannabis processing. And so I really believe it's critical to know where are these businesses going to be scattered among our city, and what effect that's going to have on, on residents here, on the possibility of commercial development, industrial development, residential development, and is it going to be attractive to, to not deter that? So zoning is a second issue. And the last is the vision of our city. Our city's vision statement says to be a beautiful, clean, safe, friendly, layfront community where people want to live, where they want to start a business, vacation, or retire. And so the obvious question for me is, does this ordinance comply with our agreed-upon vision for our city? Is this going to accomplish those things that, that we've set out to do in our strategic plan and in the vision that has been developed? So financial impact, zoning, and vision, those are my three comments on that.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time, please step forward.
Didn't you say there was a lady that wanted this?
But she had submitted a public comment, but I don't, I don't know that she's here.
Oh, she is here.
Oh, she is here.
I'm gracious, go ahead.
Pardon me?
I'm gracious, go ahead.
I was just making a... Mr. Hughes, I just wanted to notify her that if she is still here, this is the, this is now the time to speak.
I, I wanted to hear what she had to say first, but I'm... I, I guess I would echo Mr. Bean a little bit in his concerns, and I, I don't know if you all noticed, I brought this up to the planning commission, that Windsor outlawed cannabis business, period. Prohibiting any type of marijuana business within city limits in part to preserve warehouse space from being gobbled up by the newly legalized industry and, excuse me, avoid associated problems such as burglaries, robberies of cash-heavy marijuana businesses. They wanted to keep the bedroom community a wholesome community, and under those rules, the six plants must, well, under the, with the state pass, six plants must be inside and an over-the-counter permit. They were, they were going to allow that because we have to by state law with an over-the-counter permit. They also, well, the president of the school board said, I'm glad we didn't chase the gold ring of marijuana tax that seems to be the lure... that seems to be the lure for the county and other jurisdictions." That was from the president of the school board. He also said allowing commercial grows and manufacturing marijuana products creates revenue, but at a price that I think our community isn't entirely clear what that's going to be. The town council did make an exception to allow deliveries to Windsor residents from out-of-town pot dispensers. So I wanted to throw that out there because I thought they had some good points. At what price? At the, at the, at the planning commission meeting, there was a gentleman that was getting a variance for his garage. And I'm gonna bring this up because I think it points to the reputation that our city has that as a realtor I fight weekly. And I think a lot of, a lot of times it's not deserved, the reputation that the city has. But this gentleman was getting a variance for his garage, and he made a comment, "I don't grow pot in my garage." And I'm going, why did he say that he doesn't grow pot when he's just getting a variance for a garage? And I think that leads again to the reputation that the community has. We allowed medicinal grows of six plants, and we adopted an ordinance that I stood here and kind of fought when it was being adopted. And people came here and they grew, and they grew, and they grew, and they grew illegally. And I think the illegal growing is going to continue regardless of what the city or the state does. I think taxing marijuana and the cost of it, you're gonna have a black market still. And I hope we can keep that under control as well as we did this year, although I see we had a couple of grows. My concern is, under the ordinance, they're gonna be able to put a manufacturing or a, some sort of a marijuana business across the street from my home. My wife wants to move, she's been here for almost sixty years. I said at the planning commission meeting that I didn't think some sort of marijuana use across the street from my home is gonna make my home more valuable, although someone came up later and said she thought it would make my home more valuable. I don't believe that. If we're gonna, if we're gonna attract professionals to this community to live here, the teachers, the hospital administrators, the doctors, the nurses, we have to have a place for them to live, and I don't know that those types of people would want to live in a neighborhood, even if you never, you may not even know it's there. I keep hearing, "You may not know it's there." You have these buildings and people don't even know they're there. You know, I'm gonna know it's there. And I hope if this is adopted, and I assume it's going to be, I'm just having my piece. By the way, I apologize for not being here at the last meeting. I was in Oregon, and I couldn't make. I lost my train of thought. Anyway, it's, it's, my main concern is not building a reputation as a city that's going to keep the people that we'd like to see move here from moving here. And I know I have a question in my neighborhood about the general plan designation. I think we're checking into that because the land is C4 zone, but the general plan, my understanding, when I looked at the map, was residential. So either the general plan's wrong or the zoning's wrong. But I was happier when we were limiting, as an ad hoc committee, everything to the east side of the highway in Augul and Canyon, because that's our industrial area. We're at a disadvantage. Santa Rosa, Sonoma County, they're bringing it in, they want it. But they have these nice industrial areas where it's not across the street from my house. So anyway, I guess my concern is having land still available for upper-end residential homes that's not being affected by marijuana use, even if it's in an enclosed structure and there's trees and that sort of thing. I do feel that people will have second thoughts about buying a piece of property across the street from some type of marijuana use. That's, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me tonight. If I'd have known last time you had a meeting this was going on, I would have been here.
Is this your Linda Abbott?
Yes. Okay. I'm emotional about this. I admit it. I'm speaking for myself and the people in Clear Lake that feel like I feel. First, I want to say if you pass this, you will be known as legal, legalized drug dealers. That's what you will be. You need to take that in and you need to think about it. I represent myself as I speak to you tonight. My husband and I are very upset at your proposed, proposal to start commercial marijuana grows on mostly the main thoroughfares, such as Lake Shore Drive and Olympic Drive, which is my main thoroughfare. Are your minds so blind that you can't see the dangers and consequences of such a move? What are you thinking? I was addicted to marijuana for ten years. I went to Kaiser Hospital in nineteen eighty-five to get help. I got off of the marijuana after counseling for a year. It was the best thing I ever done for myself. I then taught Narcotics Anonymous as a secretary for five years. And at first, they laughed at me until I read off the hundred and thirty-six reasons why it was bad for you and I to smoke it. The one reason that I had for being good was it made me laugh. I didn't think after being raped I'd ever laugh again, but I laughed through marijuana. I mean, I laughed through that, and I also voted for medical marijuana, which I think was a huge mistake. I can now make a list of much longer reasons for not smoking pot. It gave me asthma and COPD, for which I still suffer. Since nineteen eighty-five, it leads, okay, it's been a, I have dyslexia, so forgive me if I get lost in this. I'm trying not to. It's a gateway drug, ten times more powerful than it was in nineteen eighty-five when I quit smoking it, at least to stronger drugs. It harms the brain, the lungs, the liver, and doctors are finding more things than it hurts in research. It takes away your motivation to do anything, much less work. Teens will be tempted to grow it and to smoke it because it's easier than getting a regular job. Our city will be affected in all these ways. People that don't smoke it must put up with the smell and the smoke, and it does have an adverse effect on our bodies and our health. What are you saying to the outside people of Clear Lake? Come here to grow, sell your marijuana here. We love your money. It gives us revenue. We will give you our buildings on Lake Shore Drive so that you can sell it. We don't care about our people, our children, our reputation, or our city. We want your money. And I mean that with all my heart. Would decent people would ever want to move here to live or to start business or even drive through our town? The air pollution will be terrible. It already is because I am surrounded by growers. Tina knows me. My husband and I moved here for the clean air and the beautiful lake. He's a bass fisherman. But that's all gone now due to contaminants from fertilizers, grape growers, pot growers, and numerous other things. We have a right to clean air that used to be here. We have a right to peace, to happiness, and a clean city. Other drug dealers and makers of other drugs, distributors will flock to this city. Crime will grow enormously, and if you don't think that'll happen, you're in denial. They cause fires, homicides, and danger to others, which costs us emotionally and financially. And I tell you this, if my husband and I lose our home because we are focused, forced to move, and can't make enough through selling our home because people don't want to buy it because they smell the marijuana when they pull in the driveway, we already tried to sell it. If we're forced to leave and rent another place or buy another place and pay rent, it's gonna hurt us because we have a reimbursed mortgage and we don't pay rent. And I spoke to you marijuana, or twice, about that. I have to say this, if we can't get honest revenue, then we don't need to be a city. We need to go back to the county. There are many agencies that want to help us to fight this, including the feds. We will not go down without a fight, and we will not be silent. She on you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Go ahead.
Here are your one turn.
Good evening. Y'all know me. Pastor Christian from the Nazaree Church. And I want to share Pastor Bean's, and echo his, I have a great deal of respect for the, for the council members, for Mr. Vice Mayor, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate all you guys do, and I appreciate all you have done for this community. And I believe that the decisions you make, you make for the good of this community. I just can't agree with this one. I think when you're looking at zoning and leasing land for commercial cannabis, you're simply expanding legalized drug trade. And just because it's legal doesn't make it a good thing. You can try to avoid the perceived negative impact. I don't think it's perceived. I think value, house values will go down, and property values. I believe that there really is an inherent violent crime element along with this, whether it's illegal or the, or the legal grows or the illegal grows. There's an inherent violent crime. We have more violent crime than we need in this area already, and I think this will increase it. We have one of the highest crime rates in the state. And we will also make ourselves even less desirable for other businesses. Businesses that will not just generate revenue, but generate jobs and increase the tax base. I think those, when we start leasing and making ourselves a drug city, which I think we will, the negative perception will be that. I think that the other, more legitimate businesses will not come within a stone's throw of us, the ones that we've been trying to get here for years. And they will not bring jobs, and they won't expand the tax base. And also, being a father of two teenage girls, I think of the impact on our children. And I think we're gonna be writing a check that our children will have to cash because these will, there will not be the jobs that they're looking for when they grow, when they come of age and they graduate. There will not be the tax base, and so our infrastructure could very well be, become very more deteriorated. And I think they're gonna have those two strikes against them, but there'll be a thriving legal drug trade. And I see that as very much a recipe for disaster. And so I very respectfully ask that you not to pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Nobody else? There were two points that I forgot to mention.
I think twelve is excessive in our little ten square miles with limited land available. I would rather see it be a smaller number that we can expand if, if it does what a lot of people hope it will do. You won't even know they're there. You won't smell it. It won't create traffic problems or those types of issues. You know, maybe start at six, and then if things go well, you could expand it. You start at twelve, you can't go backwards. The other thing was where it's allowed, where the CB zones, the overlay is going to be allowed. I have a problem with, like I said, when we were first talking about on the east side of the highway, Augul and Canyon, maybe out to Dam Road. I didn't have as much of a problem as I do now that you've jumped on my side of Highway fifty-three in the Augul and Canyon neighborhood. And the CB overlay can go across the street from me. So it's where it's at and how many licenses we're gonna allow are my two biggest issues.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Hambricht, and I'm the chief operating officer of Fume. We hope to be the first delivery-only depot here in the town of Clear Lake. I'd also like to echo the sentiment and the appreciation for the hard work, the city attorney, city manager, and the council people. We are very grateful and excited about the possibility of opening a delivery-only depot here in Clear Lake. We believe that there are three key impacts that are very positive for this community. We will be hiring and providing new jobs. As it was mentioned in the slides that the city manager presented, these are W-2 employees, not independent contractors. We are sourcing all of our building and construction services locally. And thirdly, the impact on general economic growth. We will be delivering into three counties, Lake, Sonoma, and Napa, from Clear Lake. And the city of Clear Lake will get all the sales tax revenue from our transactions. We look forward to the use permit process, hoping that tonight we have positive results as we did two weeks ago. And we believe that we will be a terrific applicant. We hope that the city manager will be allowed to issue temporary licenses. This will enable local businesses who are the good actors in this new emerging industry statewide to apply for their state licenses, which gives the city of Clear Lake a huge advantage. There's all sorts of local jurisdictions. The state licensing process does require local permits. And the patchwork of different counties and local jurisdictions that are not as forward-thinking as you folks here in Clear Lake, those local places will be at a disadvantage. So I really hope that you will continue the forward motion that we've experienced so far and pass this ordinance.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Chris Jennings, I am here tonight. Some of the comments earlier paint a very scary picture, you know, too many licenses, crime waves, unprofessional people, business not hiring. I have three people employed, W-2 people. Starting January, assuming that I get my vertical integration I'm looking for within the city of Dam Road, I'll probably be hiring about ten to fifteen more people full-time. I don't know the other employers in Clear Lake. They're employing close to twenty people when it comes down to it on the W-2. There is sixteen types of licenses out there. We're asking for twelve. I would understand if there's, we're gonna say there's thirty license types, and out of the sixteen, you know, when it comes down to it, then it's probably excessive, but there's sixteen total, and we're only gonna issue twelve, not counting the dispensaries and the delivery-only dispensaries. I understand concerns, people not wanting growing to happen down Lake Shore, down Olympic. Anything happening in those areas will be indoors, fully contained, security. Shouldn't have any issues with crime when it comes down to it, as long as everyone's implementing their security protocols like they're supposed to be. And technically, when it comes down to it, the water board is no longer issuing water board certificates. I'm the only person in Clear Lake that has a water board certificate. Actually, I have a tier of three. They're not gonna be opening up until December. So you're, in theory, you should only have one person, one applicant that can legally, on a state level, grow anything outdoors, which is within the greenhouse. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address council on this item?
Ms. Berg? I want to bring, I want to say I respect both of the people's opposition, and I feel for the lady. I do. But there are a thousand more on the opposite end of the spectrum. And I think that there's so much crime in this neighborhood, in this city. I feel bad for the police chief. I'm laying in bed the other night, and I'm hearing gunshots going down Old Fifty-three. We have issues currently. I don't see where marijuana will create more issues than we already have here. In fact, in some ways, I think it might curtail it because you're gonna have a lot of people hired, you're gonna have a lot of people working that aren't, that are getting in trouble. Most of the people that I have experienced that are problems are not problems with marijuana. They're problems with heroin. They're problems with barbiturates. They're problems with a lot of other drugs that have nothing to do with marijuana. And I think that, thinking that people, I've lived here fifteen years. I have not seen... I had not seen much growth in this city, truthfully. In fact, I think we might have gone a little backwards until this council. Because this council is, you really are for Clear Lake and you really are for the people. And I respect that and I respect each and every, each and every one of you. I think that not passing this would be a huge disservice to not only Clear Lake, but to Lake County. So I would really like you to consider what we all came up with in the ad hoc committee meeting and consider that this town needs, this city needs help. Whether it's from marijuana or not, that might just be a catalyst for other businesses to come. Not necessarily marijuana-related businesses, but we don't have anything here and we need it. So I hope the revenue, I hope, I hope that you guys will agree to pass the ordinance. And I thank you all, because I really, really appreciate each and every one of you, regardless of your decision. I think you're all pretty amazing people and I thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address council on this item?
Hello, my name is Erin McCarrick. I am a new resident to Clear Lake, over on Locust. And I'm one of the people who is here partially due to the potential cannabis industry, but also because I did fall in love with the place over the past two fire recoveries. I'm fortunate for this most recent fire. I hope it recovers just as quickly. But I just wanted to say that I wasn't able to make the last city council meeting because I was treating my uncle with campus oil. And due to that, he was able to sleep through the night. He has his appetite back. He has lung cancer. Getting a scan tomorrow to find out where it's at. But that is a benefit. It's not for everybody. You know, cannabis is not for everybody. And this isn't to say that this is for everyone, but it has potential to bring economic development. You look at Medford, Oregon, you look at places in Colorado where, yeah, there are restaurants or bowling alleys that come to the city because you have an industry that needs things to do. Maybe it'll bring tourists back to enjoy and relax or medical tourism, things like that. So I just wanted to say thank you for your work and give an example of people who are moving to the town because of this and how useful cannabis can be. Thanks.
Anyone else at this time wishing to address council? Thank you all very much for your input. I do appreciate every one of you for speaking out, sharing your opinions with us. Bringing back to council for further deliberation, Mr. Harris?
Well, clearly, this is a hot-button topic. There's no doubt about this. But, you know, I'm sure there's a need to kind of have an understanding of each one of our minds up here as we're deliberating this thing. And I would like to take the opportunity to give you my feelings on this. I have been fortunate enough to have been born here and raised here. I've been here my whole life. And in my whole lifetime in Clear Lake, Lake County, there has always been marijuana. So it's, this is not something that's new to Lake County. What did happen, though, is California voters made some choices. And they made some choices to make marijuana more legal than it once was. And then they made other choices to now reduce the penalties for drug charges associated to the manufacturing, carrying. There's a whole list of different things that have happened. Most of those decisions were made by California voters. Ultimately, a lot of those decisions affect us and guide us as well. We are here to act as the voice of the people. The people in our community are already growing commercially marijuana. This shouldn't be a shock to anybody. The fact that marijuana is being grown for sale, we know this. We're trying to stamp that out. It's been an ongoing problem. That has brought crime. You're correct. It has brought crime. It has brought quite a bit of crime. It has brought a lot of negative to our city. So what we do now is we figure out a way to mediate that. We're looking for a solution to the current issue we have. We know that the marijuana is not going away. I view this as a Pandora's Box situation. It's been opened. We're not closing the door and making it go away by stating that we want to have this be a retirement community and a safe community and a community that is prettier and not blighted by the growing of marijuana. There's no way to just completely close the door and make it go away. So if you read this ordinance in its entirety, the concept here is to take a black market that is currently thriving and try to turn it into a real market that generates money for the things that we need to counteract the issues that are coming with the marijuana that we currently deal with. For example, the revenue that can be generated from this could help fund our police force and can help us actually deal with the problems that we're dealing with on a daily basis. So it's difficult for me to sit here and imagine a world where currently we're safe and by voting this ordinance in, we're bringing in this evil marijuana. It's here. The thing is here. It's really what we do with it and how we act upon it. And that's where we are now. A realistic perspective is we have an issue. We have people with a desire for their product. And people in general are voting to make this product no longer a drug. They're calling it a product and they're making it a viable industry. This happened once before to alcohol. And realistically, there is a comparative here. And a lot of people that have been consuming alcohol their whole lives can sit back and say, no, it's completely different. But there was probably a time where people said the same thing. When we went through the prohibition era and we said, that's, you know, an evil drug. We don't want it around anymore. The market thrived, really, truly thrived. And what I hope to do is bring this market out of the shadows, make it something that's not something we're chasing around on a daily basis. But we actually are, in a sense, working with people who are trying to do it legally. You know, there are people that are trying to do this thing legally. And that's really important to me. It's important to me that some people come in and pull a permit to grow the six plants in their backyard. That says that they want to work with us as a city and do the right things and adhere to the ordinances that we've set forth. And we're rewarding them by saying, you're doing the right thing. We're going to allow you to do what you do. The problem I see with not working with people who are in this industry is I firmly don't believe they're going to go away. I firmly don't believe the industry is just going to shut down and go away if we don't work with the industry. I feel like we have to meet in the middle somewhere. And the only way that I can see meeting in the middle is to formulate an ordinance like this. There was a lot of time and energy put into this. There was a lot of factors put into this. No smell. I love that idea. Because I can tell you right now, I can drive, I walk all over Clear Lake. The commercial growing and commercial drying of marijuana is happening today all over Clear Lake. If it was in a facility that we no longer smelled it, I'd be pretty okay with that. The facility can't be obvious. It can't have any signs that marijuana being grown there, consumed or grown there, processed there. There can't be anything that's indicating that. So once again, when I look in somebody's backyard on a 50 by 100 lot and I see tons of plants billowing out over the neighbor's fence, that's pretty visible. And that's, that's an issue. And when I go and I try to buy a house, which I did, I would walk into that scenario and say, no way. No way, I'm not buying here. What I'm trying to do is push all those backyards into a facility somewhere and make this thing a viable. Not, I'm not as concerned about the generating of revenue. I'm concerned about trying to turn it into something that is decently beneficial. It's a, turning a liability into an asset is essentially what we can do here. But that's the goal. But that doesn't mean that I'm thrilled with any of it. It means that we have to do what we can to work with it. There's never a 100% black answer, 100% white answer. But sometimes there is a gray and we have to figure out where we are on that. Thank you.
Okay, well, there is a wide, white is we can do or we don't have to do. So just so you know, there is, there is some issue. I have, I have issues with this. Thank you for answering the tax questions. One of my main issues is we all think crime is going to go away. It's not. The crime that we have with these marijuanas, most of them are not our residents, by the way. I'm sure the chief can adjust to that, that most of them come in, they grow, they rent, they leave, they're not our residents. So when we sit there and say we're trying to do something for our residents, this is not doing for our residents. This is, 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 we're near in Greenland if you think you're doing for the residents because most of these people that are growing those type of things are not even people that stay here. Crime is not going to go away when you make this legal. The black market is going to go crazy. People don't want to pay taxes no matter how you think you're going to do this. Colorado, Oregon, all of these people that have done that will tell you their black market has skyrocketed. They will also tell you that more narcotics have hit the streets because of it, because it's legal, because everybody wants to do something that they can't necessarily get. It's just the way human nature is. I don't want you guys going in this with thinking that this is going to make our city viable. It is, I don't believe, I mean, I hope I'm wrong. I really do. I hope it makes us tons of money. But I don't want you guys thinking that that is going to be what's going to happen here. One of my biggest concerns with this also is I don't want to see it on our green belt. I don't want to see it on Lake Shore Drive and I don't want it, I don't want to see it where our tourists do come, you know? And that is probably my, the biggest thing here. If we want to draw people here, I don't want to be known as, they're coming here for marijuana and we're going to have all these wonderful little places for them to kind of smoke their marijuana at their resorts or their little clubs or whatever. And I'm all for, that's what we're going to do, having it. But I really don't want the facilities to be on our green belt. That is the place that we said we wanted to keep for, for the view of people coming into our town and seeing what we really want to be. Do we really want to be known as just a marijuana place? And there's just too many, too many places in this open view here that I'm not comfortable with. So I think that's, oh, and now we come up with a testing for if somebody's driving it illegally yet? Has that process ever happened? I haven't heard.
They're still working on it. They're testing it in other areas.
And is there an anticipation of what it's going to be on the market? Because when we talk about alcohol, there is testing for alcohol. We don't have testing for this yet. So do they have a time like they think it's going to be on the market?
Not that I've been made aware of it.
So, and that's the other issue. We have no way to, I don't know that they'll be arrested while they're out there driving under the influence, which, because I see a ton of them doing it now. And, I mean, I think maybe we'll stop the process because we have all these people that are pulling out their things, pulling out their plants and obviously transporting them. Obviously, our police are not arresting them and they're transporting thousands of plants through our facility. And I mean, I don't want to see that either. This is one of those, like you said, the Pandora Box or the catch 22. I don't want you guys going in blind thinking that this is going to be a ton of revenue because I think with that revenue, it has a ton of police force and other things that are going to happen, just like it has in all the states that are taking this on. So, like I said, I'm just not comfortable, my main thing is, is I'm not comfortable with it being so on our Lake Shore Drive and Olympic. I just, I don't want to see it that at all. I just don't.
Well, actually, I think those areas are restricted. Councilman Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I'll try not to go off on a tangent, otherwise I'll get an elbow on my side from the mayor. I tend to do that.
That's not true.
I want to thank everybody for their comments. I don't disagree with any of them. I consider the legalization of marijuana, I've stated this before, is the dumbing-dung of our society. And I don't think anybody who has dealt with marijuana, as I have, for half a century in law enforcement can doubt, can dispute that. But the fact is, is that the state of California, in its wisdom, or whatever, decided to legalize it. And we're stuck with it. I can tell you from my perspective, as in my former life as a law enforcement officer, it's a devastating enterprise to grow in marijuana. My last year, I provided six homicides in our town alone. That was two years ago. It's not a peaceful growing. Those people that grow it, there are crimes that go on that we don't even hear about. Home invasions, thefts that happen of plants. The money that is made off of that is tremendous. The property up on 39th where the plants were cut down, I'll estimate that's probably a $20,000 profit, some money put in your pocket. That's conservative. Very conservative. Like Councilman Harris said, it goes on here all the time. The commercial grow, if approved, is not going to be a penalty for our city. It's not going to solve all of our fiscal problems. But the fact of life is, it's here. We need to do what we can do to control it. We do need to make some other changes and I'm not going to go off on a tangent on this. Jeff Smith, a citizen, made a, I could see his expression, only $500 fine? That's ridiculous. That needs to be up for that many plants. That needs to be up in a thousand. Discourage it. Make it not worth the while. So we, as a city council, as a city, need to work harder on changing some of this stuff if it's possible within the letter of the law. So we're doing, that's not, that's not even a chunk change, it's less than that. So we need to do better on that. I don't like this. But I think staff and the people who worked on this did a hell of a job. And I looked over it a lot. I don't like it. But you have to go with what the fact of life is.
Vice Mayor?
I wanted to comment on some of the statements that were made. I wanted to thank Mr. Bean for the three, the financial zoning and the vision because I absolutely agree. About a year and a half ago, City Manager Folsom and I were given a portfolio on what a potential grow revenue would look like for the grower themselves and also for the city. I don't have it in front of me. It's been a year and a half since I've been able to redo that portfolio, but I know it was in the tens of thousands, probably estimating more towards the hundreds of thousands when we looked at a full year's worth of seasons gone through. So there's definitely a financial benefit and I was just looking at one portfolio, not 12 different licenses. I would be surprised if we get 12 licenses done. The way that the ordinance reads, if you are not a professional that is ready to fill out forms and pay a lot of money to the state of California to obtain your licenses and have all your ducks in a row, you will not have the ability to get a license in this city. And I would be very surprised if we see all 12 filled out. Because what we're seeing is illegal. Those people have no chance whatsoever to take part in what's going on in this ordinance. We're trying to build an ordinance from scratch that is not trying to utilize what we're seeing in our city. We're trying to do something that's going to get rid of what we're seeing in our city. What we see in our city is absolutely illegal. It is drug dealing. I agree with you, Ms. Abbott. What we see is horrible and we need to get rid of it. Our problem here is as a city, we didn't make the choice to make a rule on, what were the rules for growing? It wasn't until 2012 that we actually had our first ordinance on cultivation of marijuana, medical marijuana. Wasn't until 2015 until we actually were able to enforce it. That means that we allowed people and said, yes, you can come in here and do whatever you want because our hands are up. We messed up. We allowed people to come here and ruin our community. Now we're trying to change that. With ever since our, ever since we've implemented our rules since 2015 and enforcement, I've seen a decrease in the number of grows that we have in our cities because we are absolutely making it difficult for people. It's not impossible. Obviously, we've seen some today, but we've made it more difficult and we've seen a decrease. We want to continue to see that decrease. We are not going to be, we're not going to liberalize that law, in my opinion. I want to keep it as is, not allow people to do more. Residentials, that does not belong in the residentials in the way that we're looking at this. Commercial does not belong in our residentials. Zoning, we definitely did not allow the zoning to be inside of our residentials. So I think that our zoning, while I'm not 100% So, I think that our zoning, while I'm not 100% in favor of the full zoning map, at least it's within the zones where I feel it would be safe to do. And I know that we talked about, we don't want it to be on our green belt. But if we want to sell something, I, we need it to be on our green belt as far as the retail goes. Let's talk also about crime. I have not heard or seen any complaints from our police department about the crime because of our dispensaries. I think there's been one break-in that I can think of in the years that I've lived in the city of Clearlake and the three dispensaries that are here. I think they do their part to ensure the security of their facilities. And I believe we also have access to go in their facilities to make sure that the security measures are up to par. The vision, the vision is not to become a place of marijuana. The vision is to diversify what we offer to our community and diversify what we offer to tourists that would like to come and visit us. And marijuana is a part of that diversification. To say that we are going to become the capital of marijuana, that's, that's an impossibility. With this ordinance, we are absolutely restrictive. Santa Rosa is more on its way to looking to become the capital of marijuana. This is, this is making it difficult and a huge hurdles for people to be able to take part, but still allowing this type of business to come. And I think that's the way that we should be and see how it works and either keep it as is in the future or allow for more growth in that. I mean, we're talking about marijuana, but at the same time, we're not having any discussion about creating a brewery down Lake Shore Drive. We're all, the, the city is working with the brewery to, to allow them to create alcohol right on Lake Shore. And, and we're fine with that. And I'm fine with that. And, and we, we can't pick and choose because of personal experiences. We have to look at, how do we stop what happened in the past? And how do we create something that's going to work because it can work? As far as I'm concerned, Chief Sally, I believe we had a conversation that your officers are very well-trained in being able to perceive whether somebody is driving under the influence of marijuana. Is that correct?
Yes, they are trained in the seven-step DAR process and also can, generally, if you're under the influence of marijuana, we can detect that if you're driving under the influence. And then they're, they are subject to arrest, and we can, we can do nice stagmas and things like that, yes.
Thank you. And so, this is definitely not to say it will not come with any problems whatsoever. A bar comes with problems. And we need to make sure to offer the proper security measures to mitigate those problems. And I think that we're trying to create the, if you look, if you read the security portion of this ordinance, it's tight. It needs, you cannot tell that this is the type of business. It needs to be surrounded by a fence, not a wood board fence that you can kick through, but an actual fence that, that will keep people out. It needs to have 24-hour security, lighting, everything so that it will be secured. I think what we are, I think too many times during these types of discussions, we discuss what we see now or what we've seen in the past. And that is not at all what we're talking about. We are not trying to create an ordinance to allow criminal activity. We're trying to create an ordinance that will get rid of criminal activity. And I think that that is, the unfortunate perspective is we, we go around our neighborhoods and we see what we see. Well, that's not what we're trying to do. That, that is not at all what we're trying to do. And I think that, as, as being part of the ad hoc committee, I think we discussed so many of these different issues. We went back and forth on the zoning. And I think that we, we created a well-balanced ordinance. And while there's definitely some little tweaks that in the future we might need to look at, I, I think that at this moment, I'm in favor for what I see. Thank you for letting me go.
Any other comments before I, I begin my dissertation? Councilmember Bennett, I remember when marijuana seeds were a felony and I liked it. It was black and white. There was no question about whether or not that crime had been violated. But with the passage of Prop 215, the state of California voted and the people spoke. And all that changed, and it changed pretty dramatically in my term. When I was elected to this council, I fought hard. I wanted no marijuana grown in Lake, in Clearlake. We argued a little bit. But because we have to have governance and because we have to work with what the people want, we went through a potential referendum, we went through some legal hoops, and it became pretty clear that a zero ordinance wasn't going to work for us. So, we went back to the drawing board, went back to, we created an ad hoc. And it was through that process that we came up with our first medical marijuana ordinance that actually has been used by other jurisdictions as kind of a boilerplate for some of the things that they were doing. This is not a law or a municipal code that we have to pass before we read it. We actually sat down, we chewed on every little aspect of it. And that's how we have here today before us, is something that we actually went over point by point, piece by piece, with law enforcement, with our first responders, with the fire department, with medical, with realtors, with members of the planning commission, looking at each point and how, how we might make this work. We need to take the blinders off, and we need to look at ourselves as a society. We still have moonshine runners. We still have people that are doing things on the black market with cigarettes and, you know, get to avoid the taxation and that type of thing. The black market is going to continue. That's just the way it is, unfortunately. We, as human beings, create that and allow that. But this, I think, is a step in trying to regulate. And, and it is, it is a method, in my opinion, of cleaning up to make our city a safer city, to make our state, our city a more beautiful city and a cleaner smelling city. Because we do need to take it out of the back, backyards. And I appreciate the comments earlier on our earlier items. But like anything, there is a starting off point. And when we looked at the penalties assessed with the first violation, that's where that came in. And the penalties rise from there. Oh, here he goes. Little joke between Vice Mayor and myself with his do-overs. But anyway, please understand that this is not something that I, I have spent nights chewing on this because it's not something I like. It's not something I want to see in my city. But the voters spoke, and they, and they have continually passed state laws that we have to amend or abide by. And that's one of the things we're looking at. That's one of the reasons why we're moving this thing forward, I think, pretty quickly. And with legal counsel's help, we have this ordinance because I don't want the state coming in and telling us what we will and will not do. I want to have local control. And I really truly appreciate everyone who sat on the ad hoc committee, everyone who shared their opinions and brought this ordinance to where it is now. And the planning commission for deliberating on it, and I know that they struggled with it. But this is by use permit. And people wanting to get a license and to begin this, this business in our city are going to have to come before the city with their, with their request for license and permitting and go through that process as well. So, we, we'll still have control over when, where, and how it's grown, when, where, and how it's sold. And I'll just, I'll leave it there. But believe me, this is not something that was brought to this place lightly. A lot, a lot of consideration and thought that got into it. Thanks, Mayor.
I just wanted, thank you. I just wanted to mention, Councilmember Bennett mentioned the fine, and I mentioned the fine as well during our, one of our ad hoc committees saying, why is it so low? This is a business. If they're going to be allowed to cultivate hundreds of plants, this shouldn't be so low. But we can pull the license. At any point for, just like any business, we can yank the license and stop their, their operations.
No, forgive me. I wasn't speaking to this.
Oh, okay.
About backyard growth.
But, but for this, the fine is, in my opinion, low. But at the same time, we can yank their operation, turn off the lights, and they're done. And so, that gives us full control over any type of abuse that may possibly come up. And so, I like the fact that we get to have that level of control.
Any other comments? Very well. Need of action?
We need to do two separate ordinances?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve ordinance number 200-2017. Commercial cannabis ordinance. There's no other title to that?
There should be the long, there's a pretty lengthy title on this one.
Let me go back, let me go back to the, I don't see the title. I'm looking at the agenda and the record. Create, uh, creating a commercial cannabis business, CB overlay giving direct. I'd like to approve ordinance number 200-2017, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Clearlake amending certain provisions of Article 18-3 of the Clearlake Municipal Code to include a commercial cannabis business combining zoning designation amending Section 18-6.01 of the Clearlake Municipal Code to add certain commercial cannabis definitions, adopting a new Article 18-12 of the Clearlake Municipal Code entitled Commercial Cannabis Uses, adding a new Section 5-25 titled Cannabis Business Regulatory Permit to Chapter 5, and making a finding of exemption from CEQA under Section 15061B3 of the CEQA Guidelines.
Second?
I have a motion and a second by Councilmember Harris. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Overton?
Make one statement on this here. I'm really praying that our finding commissioner really use her head when it comes to these use permits. So, I am going to go with the council on this and vote yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Yes.
And Mayor Perto?
Aye.
Sorry for the yes.
For the second item on the table?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 201-2017, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Clearlake amending Article 5-20 of the Clearlake Municipal Code entitled Marijuana Dispensary Regulations.
Before I receive a second, I have Councilmember Bennett wanting to comment.
I need to apologize when this came before the council, the last council meeting. My mind was on the sulfur fire and the commercial grow. I, initially, when this ordinance came before council, I voted against it specifically for a specific portion of it, which was consumption of marijuana and marijuana products on site. When it came before the council last meeting, I voted yes. It was an amendment we were making to this ordinance in, it was not what, what, that was not my intention. So, I am still adamantly opposed to the consumption of marijuana and marijuana products on site of any dispensary, and I'm not going to beat a dead horse. But it allows an individual to consume marijuana and immediately leave that dispensary and drive upon our city streets under the influence. Thank you.
I have a motion. I don't believe your comment changes that motion. Is there a second or further discussion?
Second?
Motion and a second by Mr. Harris. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Perto?
Aye.
I'd like to thank everyone who participated in this. I know this is not something that anyone should take lightly, and I know I don't. I don't believe any of the other council members do. I do really appreciate and respect each, each person who stood up and tried to input. I'd also like to thank everyone who sat on those ad hoc committees and put in a lot of time in the creation of what we have here today. That said, I'll move on to item 12. Would you rate Mr. Harris?
Yeah, just one comment about this. One thing I can suggest as well is to read the, if you haven't yet, read the ordinance in its entirety because it gives you some clarity as to exactly what is or is not permissible. And that is essentially what made me rest assured that it's a benefit. So, that's my decision. It's based on the detail that goes into this ordinance. So, do take the opportunity to read the ordinance in its entirety. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Harris. My clock is showing 8:05. We'll come back at 8:15. Take a 10-minute break. And I would like to open up our item 12, a review of the city of Clearlake Code Enforcement Division for period June 1, 2017 through October 20, 2017. Information will be reported. Mr. Folsom, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce Mr. Chris Becknow, who's our finance director and also code enforcement report stand.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. Periodically, we'd like to bring to the council just a, a periodic review and assessment of various aspects of the operation of the city. At the last meeting, we went over just briefly Measure B. This time, we're talking about code enforcement. Just to give you some perspective about what's happened over roughly the past four and a half months and what you might expect over the past, over the next several months toward the end of the fiscal year. And then ask for some comments on it. As I go through this discussion, and it's not going to be a very long discussion, I would just like you to kind of keep six, six questions in mind. Is the focus appropriate? Has change been accomplished? Is the rate of change appropriate? What items affect the change rate, either positively or negatively? Are appropriate resources being allocated? And will the focus significantly change in the near term or the long term? Okay? Because as a governing body of the city of Clearlake, you're ultimately responsible for determining the direction of the city and the actions of, of the management and the employees of, of your organization. So, this is kind of what, just, we're checking in to make sure that you're satisfied with what's going on and kind of give you a feel for what, what's going on. So, just to kind of lay the framework, remember that we have an adopted strategic plan. And there are three goals which are spoken to in the strategic plan regarding code enforcement. Goal number one, which was to make Clearlake a visibly cleaner city, and it dealt with beautification zones, blighted or abandoned automobiles, and eliminating weed citywide. Goal six, which were updating policies and procedures to current government standards, starts updating ordinances, and then city policies will support economic development. So, that's what, those are the, the items that speak to code enforcement in the strategic plan which you adopted, which, of course, guide the primary direction of your staff. Just to refresh your memory, you have about a $440,000 budget for code enforcement. It's broken down between two sources. A little over one-half of it comes from the general fund. That basically covers the code enforcement supervisor and some of your towing, some of your contract services. And you'll notice that the towing services are only in there at $50,000. I will tell you that we spent a bunch more on the towing services for the abandoned vehicle abatement. But at the time that the budget was adopted originally, we didn't know what that amount was going to be. So, I can tell you it's never going to be more than 50. And of course, the $30,000 was the estimate on, on the votes. The other portion of your, your funding for code enforcement comes from the CDBG grant of about $200,000. So, that was a supplemental to the Phillips 18th Avenue grant. You'll remember that that grant has basically been completed. We have asked for an extension on that grant to continue because we had more program income, which is what we're using to fund the code enforcement from CDBG. We have asked for a one-year extension of that from CDBG, and we are applying since we've spent over 50% of the, the grant at this point applying for code enforcement grant again to fund it for the next two or three years. So, that just kind of gives you what the strategic plan and what the funding was for code enforcement. I will tell you, under the contract services portion of that, that's really what you have in terms of abatement. And I'll come back and I'll talk about abatement in a, in a couple of minutes. So, the recent areas of focus and the trends. So, I have basically six items there with air. And I'll come back and I'll talk about abatement in a couple of minutes. So the recent areas of focus and the trends. So I have basically six items there with arrows pointing up and down in different colors. So what does that mean? Well, the idea there is we'll talk about abandoned vehicle abatement. If you remember about four months ago, the abandoned vehicle abatement fund was released and opened up, and we received about $180,000 of that money. But in order to get that money, we had to go out and tow a whole bunch of cars in a fairly short period of time, in basically a couple of months. And you can see we tagged and towed and gone on arrival, basically 470 cars, which in a city the size of Clear Lake was a lot of cars, which was a pretty amazing, pretty amazing feat. Now, the reason that the arrow is green and trending downwards is because that effort is now trailing off, and we will be now dealing with abandoned vehicles on a regular pace. We won't be going at it at an insane pace like we were at the, you know, four and three months ago. We did do one specific enforcement area. This was the area that's behind City Hall over towards Pomona School. The reason it has an upward red area is we intend that process, the special enforcement area, to be moving up. We're going to be doing more of that, because we want to focus on specific areas and begin to make a more visible impact in an area. One of the things that you notice with code enforcement, as you officers go out and they work in different areas, you begin to see, you know, work in little areas, but cumulatively, it looks like a lot less progress, and it becomes a little disillusioning to the public, because it doesn't seem like there's as much progress in code enforcement as you really want there to be. So we're going to start changing the focus a little bit, look more at specific enforcement areas, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. The past couple of months, we have been doing marijuana seasonal enforcement. Obviously, we have the grow season, so we've had a lot of enforcement in that area. It was less this year than it was last year in terms of the, I think, the raw amount of grows, but the amount of enforcement was still pretty intense, and you'll understand that with the next chart in a second. Cases to City Council for assessments and abatement. Now, I have a chart in a second that will explain that, so let me come back to that for a minute. The other primary thing that's been going on is training of our officers. So the officers, especially Steve Felder and Tina, have been out at training, getting their certifications, so that they can be more effective enforcement officers. And lastly, they did, they worked intensively during the fire, and I can't tell you how much everyone appreciated it. I don't think people in Lake County understand how much public works and code enforcement are used to do road work and roadblocks. I will tell you, in other counties, that doesn't happen. So in Lake County and Clear Lake, I assure you, when your code enforcement officers are out there in the middle of the night, standing on those roadblocks, that's over and above, and that's significantly different than what a lot of other areas do. But that, of course, when they're out doing that, they're not doing code enforcement activities. And that arrow is pointing straight down. That effort is over in terms of, you know, the immediate impact of the sulfur fire, and they, of course, did go out and deal with a lot of the vehicles that were damaged during the fire. So cases to City Council for assessments and abatements. And I want to talk about this for a section. Assessments are assessments for code violations. Abatements really deal with the marijuana portion of it. So you really have two things that come to the council. The assessments, we expect to continue on at a fairly steady pace. That's why you have a flat arrow there that's blue. The abatements, because most of those are marijuana-based, will trend down, because we're at the end of the season. We won't see that again until the season starts growing next year. Wanted to talk a little bit about what has been brought to the council over the... Since July 27, 2017. You all have dealt with 64 cases over those meetings. You know, when you deal with them at different meetings, that's five different meetings, you tend to lose track of how many cases you actually dispose of as you go through the process. And 64 is a lot of cases. And I just want people to realize that these are the cases that come to the council that you have to decide. So you've made a lot of decisions on these, but keep in mind that the vast majority of cases that are started are resolved without ever going to assessment or without ever going to abatement. So you had 64 as a total over that time period, but there have been a whole lot that have been settled outside of the process that you never see. And I just kind of want to give you some perspective on that. Okay. So that's what's really been happening over the past four months. What do we expect the shift to be, or the focus to be, over the next several months? What's the direction? Well, the abandoned vehicle abatement, we will continue to do that, because that's obviously one of the specific goals in the strategic plan. It was very intense and time-consuming to start. We expect it, that it's going to be a much more standard process now, hence the green arrow is trending down. But there will be a level where it kind of levels out, and you will see constant movement during that time period, but you're not going to see the intense activity that you saw in the previous four months. Marijuana enforcement? So we have the green arrow down, that was as you saw earlier. The grow season makes it very intense, but keep in mind that you're going to have hoop houses and growing year-round. There are those who will insist on flouting the law. Whichever ordinance you pass, there are going to be those who are going to flout the law. So there will be some sort of enforcement process going on. And the only other comment I would make about that is now that you've adopted, excuse me, the commercial cannabis ordinance, we don't know what the impact of that's going to be. We can assume that they're going to be compliant and follow all the rules, but we're going to have to wait to see what the actual impact is. So what will tend to trend up in terms of focus over the next several months? Special enforcement areas. So the code enforcement staff and I will be sitting and looking at what areas should be specifically identified for enforcement, and how often that should happen. So when we did the specific enforcement area, and that was back in mid-August, I believe it was, and we went in and intensively hit the area, we gave out over 50 citations, if I remember correctly. And so we've had some good compliance, but not particularly great compliance, but we were in an area that probably had been ignored, not enforced for quite a period of time. So I think that there was... I think there's a little bit of an education process to the folks that live over there in terms of the seriousness of cleaning it up. So there'll be probably another sweep through there to kind of follow up on that to make sure that they realize. But they're still going through the system, because it takes a while for these to work out. But we'll be talking about what kinds of specific areas that we should be looking at to do specific enforcement. So one of the other two in the strategic plan are weed enforcement. So one of the things in terms of making Clear Lake a visibly cleaner city was the elimination of weeds citywide. So we're going to be looking at that issue and figure out how to do it. We do have a weed ordinance, we do have a weed ordinance in our code enforcement, but we're going to need to figure out a way to get the message out there to make sure that we have compliance and figure out an effective way of doing that citywide. And then the other thing that we're working on, that we'll be working on, is the vacant property ordinance, which I discussed with you, I guess it was at the last meeting or the meeting before, and we're still working on putting that together to bring it back. In all of that, I just wanted to, now that I've kind of gone through where we've been the past few months, where we're kind of looking at going in the next several months, kind of want to get a check from you, from the wise folks up there, and see whether we're going in the right direction, whether you think that... Whether you think that you might want to shift. One of the primary problems that we have, and one of the issues that when it floats up through the system of code enforcement in terms of, you know, climbing through complaints, that get to me are the abatements and dealing with the issue of abatements. And that is a particularly frustrating problem to deal with. And let me just give you a little bit of an update on that. And that's talking about, you know, rate of change, is the focus appropriate? Because that is one of the truly frustrating things for... I know for you, it's frustrating for us, and I know it's frustrating for some of the people. Abatements are very expensive. We have had some luck in terms of getting grants from CalRecycle to do abatements in the past. It can be a very expensive and a time-consuming process, and we're going through that right now. You know, when you talk about dealing with a burned-out building, you know, you heard today, when they were talking about dealing with a burned-out building, you have to go through and get the household waste, and then you have to go through and you have to have, make sure that there are no hazardous materials like asbestos and all of that, because if you have asbestos, your old disposal pattern and where that stuff can go is very different. And that becomes very expensive. So we, you know, I was talking to Kathy Satterland at the county. The average debris removal during the Valley Fire was anywhere from $50,000 to $60,000. And that was for properties that were completely burned down. So a lot of the properties we're dealing with are not completely burned down, so that's why this abatement gets very expensive. So we had a grant from CalRecycle. We used it. We did the abatement for the building across the street, and we did a couple of other buildings, and then had to turn back some of the money. We had filed for another grant with CalRecycle just immediately before all the fires took place. And when the fires hit, CalRecycle sent a notice out to us saying that they were taking all that grant process and putting it on hold, because a lot of their money was being redirected towards debris removal at fires, because they were just overwhelmed with... I mean, we were nothing compared to Napa, Sunova, and Mendocino. So we're not going to be getting that sort of resource for abatement. So we're going to be... That'll be one of the things that I will be looking for, is trying to figure out if we have alternatives for abatement, because the reality is, we're back to getting them to voluntarily abate, or fining them in the hopes that, you know, we can, you know, cajole them into abating, but, you know, that can be of limited benefit. So if abatement becomes real important, then that talks about, then you start talking about a significant resource allocation. So that's why I kind of raised that issue. So as you look at those six items, I'm going to stop talking and ask you if you have any comments or thoughts regarding the six questions I have up there, or if you have other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Beckhout. Vice Mayor?
Thank you for this review. I appreciate it. I think code enforcement is such a sensitive subject in our city. We want to see it cleaned up. We want to see it cleaned up faster, and there's obvious hurdles as to why we can't get it done in time, in the timely fashion we'd like to see it. There's a couple of things. One, you said you would work on a strategy for weed abatement. I just at least wanted to give you some information based on my conversations with the fire department. It seems we're doing the same task and doubling our work, and that we're not being efficient. And I know that at the point that we, in the past at least, and I don't know if this will be in the future, but that we've been handing off our weed abatement violations over to the fire department. To me, seems to be a vital time where a fire department is also dealing with fires potentially at that point in time. So just to at least give you that information. I know that the stat that was given to them when I asked, they had not had a chance to even started at that point, and so it just seemed like a drop ball. And so the other... And for weed abatement, I was wondering, I know that we do our citywide cleanup, which is slightly different than what I'm thinking, because here we actually have the cans, the dumpsters for us to collect garbage as a group, as a city, volunteering together and cleaning our city, and maybe not offering a dumpster, but maybe organizing, an idea of today is the day to cut your weeds, like this day in April is your first weed abatement event for all of us to go out. Maybe we can work with some of our local businesses where...
Did we say vegetation?
Yes, I know, it's so confusing these days. And maybe we could work with some of our local businesses. Maybe they can have a sale on lawn trimming items, so that people can go and get their weed eaters fixed, or get their string, or whatever. Maybe we can work with our landfill. Maybe we can work with, why can't I think of the place, a local landfill? Quackenbush, to see if maybe there's a special deal, where if you go dump your green stuff, it's a lot, it's half off that day. Something to try and really push the community and give them an incentive to work together to abate. Just an idea, just putting it out there. For the special enforcement areas, would it be possible to maybe work with our police department and check a crime map to see if maybe we have a lot of code enforcement issues and a lot of crime, and by dealing with the code enforcement issue in this area, maybe it would lower the crime compared to a high code enforcement issue area with less crime? To see if we can help with two things at one time. Absolutely agree that the abatement fund, without any better word, just sucks. Thank you for the horrible news that we will not even have a chance. But what I'm curious about is, do we know how much it costs us to clean up Pearl and Coloco? Did I say that right?
Yeah. Um... I don't remember. You know? Yeah. The total of the two were about $85,000.
So $85,000, and does that include the salaries paid, the hours used by public works, by code enforcement and all that as well, or is that just for the dumping of what was in there?
That was the entire project, but luckily, there was very little asbestos and lead at those properties.
You said $85,000?
Okay. Pearl and Coloco. The Stacy perceive project. Oh, oh, sorry. I was making a wrong memory. Oh, no, that didn't cost us anything.
But I mean, we pay for dumpsters, I believe.
No, the property owner, you had the property given to them, they had the dumpsters.
To, to kind of get an idea of what it costs to clean up garbage, not necessarily a home, but at least to clean up garbage?
So, the two dumps were roughly sixteen hundred dollars.
Sixteen hundred dollars? So, it would seem to me that there's potential for abatement for areas where maybe the house is not a red-tagged house that needs to be destroyed, but where there's garbage that's being completely ignored by the landowner, and they're just kind of ignoring our-
Well, if I could just insert, we did have public works staff there, we did have a look on the backhoe there. Did we factor in that, that cost as well?
No.
Yeah, because I mean, the city, the city shoulders that, that, that cost.
That's got to be-
They have the equipment.
Well, and, and let me, let me make one comment about that, because I know that, that our public works director is not here, but I'm, I'm sure he's at home watching and howling at the moment.
We have lots of projects for him.
Well, and, and every time that we take the workers from grading roads or working on, or working on public works projects to go do this sort of abatement is another day or two that they're not upgrading the roads and working on public works projects. So, so it's not just the, the actual dollar cost of the time that they're there, that the real cost to the city is the falling behind of the work schedule that, that they have.
And, and I don't disagree with that. I, I agree that they've been pulled off away from some of the other projects a lot in the past. I know I've had those discussions with Director Heron. But I think also there's a cost to our community by not cleaning up as well. And so, it's about that juggling act, and if it's possible, it's obviously was made-
I agree. That when we're using their equipment and we're using their staff, there is a cost.
Definitely, same thing when we use our police officers when we're going for some weed abatement.
And, 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 and if I could just say, that, that just really illustrates the, the tension in terms of the allocation of resources. They will do whatever it is that, that they're directed to do. So, the decision to allocate them to A means B doesn't get done. And so, you know, it's, it's okay to make that decision, but it's also important to understand the consequence of that decision, and then not come back and, and, and forget that. And then, people, people, other people get upset that, well, B wasn't done. Well, yeah, it wasn't done because the decision was made to do A. And, you know, then, then you put them in a, in a no-win situation.
I think it's conversations like this, Mr. Becknell, that, that bring that up to the forefront so the public can help, and I thank you for doing that.
Right, okay.
And my last thing also is, what is the, I'm sorry, I'm completely ignoring some of your questions that you put up on the board.
I just put them up there-
What, what is the potential, we've talked about it in the past, and I believe there's some works. If you can let me know what's the possibility of protecting our code enforcement officers, whether with tasers or pepper spray, something, because I know that we do send them in locations that can, where they need a police presence. And if we can maybe make them feel a little bit safer, then maybe we can help with that balancing act of what resources we need to, to, to adjust with.
So, the, the answer to your question really is, if they're going into a situation where they're going to need a taser or a pepper spray, I don't want them going there, because they're, they're not in a position to do that. They need to have an officer with them. Just because I, I just don't, I just don't think that's appropriate. There's nothing so important with code enforcement that they need to, that they need to put themselves in a risky situation. So, I'm, I'm not particularly in favor of giving, of giving them tasers, pepper spray. Yeah, but beyond that, I'm, I'm not sure. And I, and I have a dis, we had this discussion a while back, and I'm, and I'm just really not in favor of that, because I just really don't. They have enough to do in enough, less hostile places to go in the city that they can deal with that, that we can defer dealing with those ugly situations until they get to a point where we can make sure that, that the officers have time to cover them.
And I thought I was finished, but because of your statement, I want to try to continue. I think that there's times where you think it might be a safe situation, and maybe it's a abandoned home, and you're not aware that there is a squatter in there, and that squatter reacts in a very threatening way, and you weren't aware of the situation. If it's possible to protect them rather than waiting for something to happen and then say, "Oh, maybe we need to protect them," that's why I'm putting it there. Just, it's not for them to go into dangerous situations. It's for them to ensure that they're protected in case they need to be protected. And I, I, I have certain fears of areas that they go to that I've seen, that I've been called about as well, and anything that we can do to protect them, and of course, tell them not to go into places that will give them that alert, you know, the hair on the back of their neck. That, yeah, please don't go there. But if there's a way to protect them for that possibility, I'd love to see that. Thank you.
A calm situation could turn in a split second, as you're well aware of. So, I think it's very minimum, pepper spray being from a irate citizen who was cooperative a second ago to a dog coming in, in an aggressive manner might be well, something to think about. I've always been of the opinion that code enforcement is right up there with our law enforcement. If you, and I like the idea of a targeted enforcement, where you hit an area. The city I came from before I came back home to Lake County, they hit it block by block by block. And it was an extremely high crime area. People just can't imagine what it was like. And if you clean up a block, crime's not going to exist there, because the criminals, I don't want to use the term dirtbags, they don't want to work out of there. Code enforcement is so important to the, to the function of our community, working hand-in-hand with our law enforcement. It's, it's unbelievable. They, our code enforcement division has done an awesome job this past year with what they've had to work with. The salt for fire, the lack of manpower really for the tasks they've been assigned to. We need to give them any and all support we can. The one question up there, is the focus appropriate? I think we have finally raised, we, you and the code enforcement division are bringing in the focus, what they need to do to be more effective, although they've done an outstanding job. One thing I would like to see, it would even tie in what we do up here, is to publicize what we do as far as abatements and assessments to properties on a regular basis, so what's out there. So, the community knows that if you have a junky or, or pizza property, that you're going to pay, and you're going to pay it to the nose, be it on your taxes or, or whatever. And I, I really feel that that should be a component of, of the focus, of, of letting the, the citizens who don't care about how, or what our vision is, to let them know that we're going to make them pay one way or the other. Kudos to our code enforcement crew. I, I think they're the ones that are, that boots underground, that there's support staff within city home.
Councilor Harris?
So, a couple of things. One thing that I definitely feel like, if there is a possibility of increasing the fines for people who do not clear, I don't know what our fine is exactly, I haven't reviewed that, but increasing the penalty for not clearing a lot, that's currently a fire danger, obviously, like we're talking about, these are being handed off to the fire department. I know that's of increasing concern, and we have fires every year now. So, I can tell you, just in the last few weeks, or a couple of weeks since this fire, I've had many people stop me and say, "Why aren't you, the city, doing something about these property owners who clearly don't care if we burn?" And I, I get it, I understand that, you know, they don't care. And a lot of times, I'm actually having, I'm being contacted by commercial business owners who are actually complaining about the commercial lot next door. So, we're even talking about large-scale properties. And so, that, that is a major problem in, in the community, obviously. And I just think that that probably, at this point with the fire danger, needs to go to the forefront. And if there's a way that we can increase the penalty for not taking action on your own property, that would be possibly beneficial. So, that's, that's that situation, that just comes into vegetation removal, obviously. But as far as the marijuana itself, I don't know if we've tried this, but I think it would be beneficial to, in the off-season, which is what we're coming into now essentially, is to send out an informational brochure. And I would probably declare this more of a warning about the potential repercussions of growing marijuana illegally. And then to give an outline as to what is the process, what is the permit process, what is allowable? And I think we should possibly even consider the idea of mass mailing this to every citizen in the community, and we should send it in English and Spanish. Because I have a feeling that that's maybe where we're having the breakdown in communication. I know that I've actually been out on some of these enforcement things, and it seems like there's a confusion there. But maybe there is, and maybe there's not. The fact is, if we sent it out in both English and Spanish, we know that there's no confusion it was sent out. So, I just don't know if that would benefit, I'm just throwing this as a suggestion, obviously, that's why we're here. I personally, when it comes to the idea of the, the public works doing anything else other than doing what they're supposed to be doing, particularly Measure V efforts, I don't want any detraction from that. The voters in our community were gracious enough to vote for something to fix our roads. We need to keep the people that we have created on staff for fixing roads doing just that, because we have that commitment to our community, and to reward them for their taking part and voting themselves a tax. So, that's a big deal to me. Regarding the safety of our code enforcement officers, I, I couldn't, I couldn't agree more. There's some, something needs to be done. I think that truly, I would feel very uncomfortable going, especially into a potentially hostile situation. And like you said, we don't know, and we would not send them to something that we know would be hostile. But yeah, it could change in an instant. And that, that is concerning for me. And I, I think that at a minimum, they should have some sort of protection. I don't know if right now they have any kind of a way of calling out rapidly, without making a telephone call. And I think that would be of concern, to make sure that they can communicate in a rapid way via a radio type of a system. And then also, I would agree with the pepper spray, some sort of a defensible mechanism there. And then also, I, I think that they should have a, the body cameras. I think the body cameras are a fantastic concept, and I think that if they had communication with a homeowner, it would be nice to have that communication on record. And if we ever have a question, we have a way of pulling that record. I don't know if that's a possibility, but that's something we could look into. The last thing that I would make mention of is, I noticed on your budget that for the, the training budget for code enforcement, we only have three thousand dollars allocated for training. And I don't know if that's, that seems really minimal. I know the training process and what the costs involved in training people. I, I just think like three thousand might be something we, we look at when we go for our budget review. Thank you.
Councilor Robert.
Well, I reiterate, you guys are doing a fantastic job compared to what we've ever had here as long as I've been sitting here. Focusing on a certain area has been something that I really have always wanted. I really appreciate that you're focusing on mine here, because that's where I get probably ninety percent of my calls. Always been in this area, and I have tried to work with police in the past, I'm sorry, other past police chiefs and, and the neighborhood there to try to clean up the crime there. So, I do believe that if we clean up this area, hopefully that will clean up the crime that's out there so badly. You know, there are little things of ones, the taser ones, which, you know, they, they, I don't know if they're legally could even use those.
I'll be happy with that. Is there a poll?
Yeah, so, one other question I have is, is with the fees and everything that we've allocated towards both, are we bringing in any money from that? And are we receiving the fines that we have charged for, say, the marijuana groups and stuff? Or are they just leaving and we're not getting anything?
Yes, we have, we have gotten fees in, I, I don't know what the amount is, but we have received actually more than I ever thought we would have received.
I anticipated it. I was going to say, we're going to say they owe us money, but they're going to take their weed, they're going to go, and we're never going to see them again, and they're just going to go find someplace else to grow, you know, so.
We have, the, the funds have started to come in, and we're seeing more than I ever thought we would see. So, it's a positive trend. So, how far it goes, I don't know.
I mean, I, I think our focus is, is really been good. I think you guys, I think that the way we've been doing it is, it seems to be working well, and I think we see a big change, because you are focusing on certain areas. Like you said, when they're all over, we don't really see it. But when you do do one area, it stands out a lot. So, I think people are starting to see that we are doing things. So, now when they see them in these other areas here and there, they kind of know, it's starting to, we're starting to be more visual. So, I think that needed to happen. So, I mean, personally, I'm, I'm really happy with our code enforcement. The happiest I've been in almost fourteen years that I've been here. I think we, I think we definitely are moving in the right direction. So, and we've got a good crew, you guys are awesome. So, I appreciate it, thank you for your hard work, all of you.
Tim, you got a comment?
Yes, recently, my staff has trained the code enforcement officers in the use of pepper spray. I believe my staff has purchased the equipment needed for them to carry pepper spray as well. Just some comments on the taser. The, the code enforcement officers are not sworn officers. They can carry a taser, any civilian can carry a taser. There is a civilian model. Our tasers are not civilian models. The taser design is for, they're about fifteen hundred dollars apiece, and they're essentially made to taser somebody and then drop it and run away. And taser will replace those for free if that's, if they have a case and were attached to those things. So, I just wanted to reiterate that, understand that at this time, our code enforcement officers are not sworn, so they do not have the law enforcement authority to carry certain things. Their pepper spray has to be a smaller size, those types of things. But they have been trained, and I believe they're getting the equipment to do that, for their protection. In addition, we, we've also worked with them and got them radios, so they do have radios, and they have used them to call. As a matter of fact, Officer Steve Felder had called us when someone was hitting his truck with a cane. I think we had a three-minute response time to that location at that time, as well as our officers are on a regular basis responding with the officers on some of these calls that they are concerned about.
Thank you, sir.
My last do-over. I did want to commend, I wanted to commend our Officer Steve Felder. I, I'm, I'm getting this feeling from the numbers that I've received when I'm requesting numbers from code enforcement, that you have almost single-handedly taken care of the majority of the pot that we've had to deal with. So, I just wanted to say thank you, and your, your cubicle shows that. I wanted to say thank you for, for your hard work, because it is such a nuisance to our community, our residential area. So, your, your, your efforts are felt and they're appreciated. And also, you mentioned the extra work that is done by our code enforcement staff that is not code enforcement-related. I did hang out with Officer Felder until about two o'clock in the morning on the Monday or Tuesday morning, whatever that was, after the fire, as he was at the barricade, making sure people were not going back into the fire zone. So, yes, definitely appreciate- So, yes, definitely appreciate the extra mile that our staff goes. Just one last thing, when I did have a conversation with the fire department, I forgot to bring this back, if it's possible to have a mutual violation letter with both the insignia of the fire department and the city of Clear Lake, because they have to create their own paperwork on top of our paperwork, because they can't sign it with our insignia on there. And so if it's possible to maybe have an MOU between the fire department and us, where we can use a single piece of paper that says that you have violated this, and we both agree that this is a violation, just another suggestion.
I don't know that the judicial courts will allow that.
If I may comment, there are some members of the fire department, one in particular, that has law enforcement authority, and they have citation authority, so under an 832-type situation. Our code enforcement officers currently do not have that, so when they're talking about citations, they are administrative citations, they're not criminal citations.
And I was speaking specifically about the vegetation abatement process.
Right, the fire department personnel can issue criminal citations for that. They have direct filing with the district attorney's office.
Thank you.
Well, I just wanna echo what you already heard. My only other comment is, we have talked about this before, and we talked about hopefully trying to create some work with companies that wanna come in and abate properties that have, you know, these vegetation loads, brush, and tall grasses, and I would just like, really like to encourage anybody looking to get into that business, or expanding maybe their tree trimming business or something like that, into maybe weed eating and doing some incentive work like that. I know we've also talked about a blanket boilerplate letter that we could send out from the city with City Letterhead, that includes the names of some businesses, and I don't even know that we have those businesses yet, but if they were to come out, I know We-Tec used to do this, and he had a couple others that were on the letter, that we could send out, notifying property owners to abate their vegetation problems. That was one thing. And I just, again, I like the idea, thank you for bringing it forward. Oh, it came back to me now. I think we, as council, also need to be mindful that when a case is brought to us, I saw all this, and I did it, I started to do it myself, when we saw some pictures that they weren't really horrible, they weren't, the property wasn't completely covered with garbage, with the doors hanging out, and mold growing on the side of the walls, and we went, well, that's not so bad, and we wanted to cut them some slack. And I think we really need to be mindful that our CMCs are there for a reason, and if it's gone through this process, if people haven't taken the steps to abate the problems that have been recognized and brought to their attention, then I think we need to look at that also as a judicial body, in how we act. Because I think if we start trying to piecemeal our personal opinions, or maybe not near property, and question the officers, we need to make sure you guys are providing us all the evidence, and we want you to do that. But I also think we need to really take into account, it's here for a reason, and that's the reason why we're dealing with it. So, just for our own edification. And thank you very much. Mr. Harris.
I just always wanted to do the revisit. No, I'd like to, I would like to say, no, I definitely wanna echo the thank you so much for the work you guys do. It is, it's a tedious work, too, you're out there going and trying to accomplish something, and you don't always, you don't necessarily get to see the wonderful benefits of it, you know, to come to fruition in a timely manner. And I imagine when you go back a year later, and if the situation's the same or worse, it's probably pretty frustrating, and I totally understand, and I appreciate Chris McNell as well for spearheading the efforts here, so just wanted to mention that, thank you.
Last do-over. So, I'm walking, because I heard there was a marijuana girl, and I wanted to check it out in this open area, and I happened to stumble across some homeless individuals yesterday afternoon, and it was so nice, just because walking through there, they started picking up their trash cans, and breaking down some of the camp and everything, because they thought I was official or something, I don't know, just walking through looking at something else, so. They do know you're out there, and I was pleasantly surprised with how eager they were to clean up their mess. I didn't even ask them to. I encouraged them once they got started. Thanks, Chris, I appreciate that. Keep reporting. All right, moving on to item 13, consideration resolution.
I will be excusing myself from item number 13, as I am a part of the event that we will be discussing.
Consideration Resolution 2017-81, a resolution of City Council, City of Clear Lake, proving temporary street closure for the 15th Annual Trunk or Tree Event at Lake County Youth Center at Redbud Park. Mr. Folsom.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the Lake County Pride Foundation has submitted a special use permit application for the 15th Annual Trunk or Tree Event to be held on Tuesday, which is Halloween. They're requesting the temporary street closures as follows. A portion of Gulf Avenue from Lakeshore Drive to Ballpark Avenue, the street closure will consist of barricades placed at the intersections of Gulf Avenue and Lakeshore. Setup will be at 3:00 PM, with the event beginning at 4:00 and ending at 9:00, and the barricades removed by 10:00. There'll also be a temporary closure of Redbud Park from approximately 4:00 PM to 5:00 PM for the parade, and the barricades will remain in place till the conclusion of the parade. Yeah, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Who's doing the closures? Is that Public Works, or are we volunteer staff?
I can answer that normally, if you want me to. Okay, so normally, Public Works drops the barricades off, and like in the places, and we just have to, normally we, what we did before, we just send them out, they tell us where we've been met, so they're there already, they drop them off early for us, because they're busy, and I'm assuming it's gonna be the same to be at the village area, you know, so they drop them off early for us, because they have to take care of that area.
Lieutenant, tell me, is there some additional questions?
Yes, you're exactly right. Our staff is very limited, our volunteer staff is the one that, and they don't close the roads at the village, but they do provide traffic control, so we can minimize the risk to the pedestrians that are in the area. So, they're committed to that, and so typically, it would be Public Works that does that, I don't know if they have the staffing for that, I can't speak on their behalf, but that's...
We just appreciate that, again, the efforts of our staff, to make sure that people are safe during Trunk or Tree Halloween. Any additional comments? Vice Mayor, let me just tell you something. Any member of the public wanting to comment on this item? Step forward, I'll bring it back.
Make a motion to close, or to approve the closure of the street as described.
Have a motion, and second, by Councilmember Overton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Foes, passes unanimously with Vice Mayor Sabatier abstaining. Moving on, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. So, over the last couple of weeks, we opened up the LAC, which is the local assistance center. A lot of our activities have still been remaining around the fire. Acting Chief Selly and I attended the Lakeport City Council meeting on 10/17, just to acknowledge what they did for us, that they always are coming out and providing assistance to us, and how much we appreciate that. We had the ABA meeting, the vehicle abatement meeting this last week, I gave updates to the Lake County Chamber and the Clear Lake Chamber, and as I mentioned, multiple fire-related meetings. Next week on Tuesday, we do have our annual City Halloween. It will be from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM. The theme for this is "At the Movies," so feel free to dress up and come join the festivities with us. Everybody's gonna be dressed up, it's required, so we've got pizzas from CSO's, yes, Chris? Yes. We've got pizzas, we've got candies, we have things to give out for folks who might have allergies, so we've got something for everybody. I do wanna point out to you a number of special meetings that we're gonna have coming up, so please get your pencil out. Because we have no council meeting because of Thanksgiving, and we've also canceled the second December meeting, all of this was much in advance of the sulfur fire. With the sulfur fire, there was the public health emergency that was declared, that we have to, as long as we, as long as it's going to continue, we have to reaffirm that every 14 days. So, had we normally had our regular scheduled council meetings, we'd, for the most part, be okay, but since we canceled those, we have to add some special meetings. So, we're gonna have our normal meeting on November 9th, and then a week later, we'll have a special council meeting on November 16th. The next week is Thanksgiving week, so we will not have a meeting, but we'll have a special meeting again on the 30th. And then two weeks later, we'll have our regular council meeting, and then again, we're gonna have a special council meeting, because the following council meeting is the week of Christmas, which we've canceled. Then we'll have to have another special meeting on the 4th, and then the next week will be our regular council meeting, and assuming that we're still continuing with all this, we'll be back on a normal process where we are every, the second and fourth, third space. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Folsom. Are you ready? Let's move over.
Well, I pretty much have just been doing the activision and working at the, there with everybody. I mean, Cal OES and FEMA have been great, they've been easy to work with, very easy to conform with whatever is needed to happen, so this fire is definitely different than the past. I think we've all learned a lot. In fact, when we set up, we said we set up way too fast, we're getting too experienced at it, so, but during all of this, it's come to light of some of the things that might be helpful for us to have at the, at the center there for evacuation, evacuation staff. So we were talking to Cal OES tonight about some of the things, such as a generator, and so she's going to be taking that up to their head, people, and talking to them about some of the things, phone lines, et cetera, whether that's something we should have on, or are they gonna really be able to always have something there for us to have phone lines and stuff? So we've been, we're still kinda going over things every day, having a group when we do these things, and it's been really actually nice working with them. Everything's been really smooth there, I've pretty much just been there, I haven't went to any meetings, so that's pretty much what I've done. So, if you have any questions about the recovery part, I can answer all those.
Thank you, Joyce. Mr. Harris.
I have nothing to report, thank you.
Mr. Bennett.
I do. I've been at some of the meetings, as far as disaster. I've been at an ABA meeting last week. This last Friday and Saturday, we had a vehicle amnesty up at Councilville Auto Salvage. Some prelimin, or some totals of what we had was for, at the Councilville Auto Salvage, passenger vehicles total were 40. Trucks were eight, vans and SUVs were six, motorcycles two, and miss ladies parts one. For Jones Towing, where they can take some up in Lakeport, passenger vehicles 14, motorhomes 11, travel trailers nine, utility trailers one, camper slash cabover two, boats 11, carriers 10. Out of those, unfortunately, three, now Jones didn't keep track of where the vehicles came from, so that second part with the motorhomes, travel trailers, and utility trailers, we don't know where they came from. But for the ones that were in the Councilville Auto Salvage, there were only three from the city of Clear Lake, and one from the city of Lakeport. So, that's what happened, and that was considering the fire we had and what was going on, they had considered canceling it, but it was too late, so it wasn't a bad turnout.
Is there a plan to do no?
Not right now.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
I haven't been to a meeting, and I wanna say that we somehow seem to have missed our marketing ad hoc committee meeting. I don't think we ever got a cancellation, we just completely forgot. Did we cancel? Okay. Well, then I missed the cancellation. I knew we were too busy for that, because we were in a meeting during the time it should have been a meeting. So I didn't go to any specific meetings, other than all the similar, all the fire meetings. I did start working with the Cal OES, FEMA, and especially wanna thank Lake County Social Services for helping put together the LAC. I was there on Monday to try and organize it Tuesday when it started, which was organized chaos, and then by Wednesday, it seemed to trickle down, and I know that I did receive a lot of compliments from FEMA and Cal OES, saying that Councilmember Overton has been very easygoing with the use of the facility to move her senior program into another part of the building, and so thank you for being there and being accommodating, and also for helping them throughout the days, but I have not been there. I did get a chance to be interviewed by ABC Michael Finney, I don't watch TV, sorry. Michael Finney, who it was nice to see them giving us some attention, and letting people know what was going on in Lake County, and what we're doing to help out with the recovery effort and moving forward. Other than that, that's, that's, that's it for me.
Can I have one do-over?
Of course.
I'll, because I wanna mention, one of the things, again, I'm so proud of us, is that we have been basically commended for how much we all come together as a county. Again, they say they have never seen anybody do it, I've heard this over and over today from all the top people, that were in and out there, that they just can't believe how all of us in the county come together, even though we're not on that end, they're still down here helping us. And one of the things that, I don't know if you guys seen on the news, that was mentioned, on how because of our valley fire, Red Cross has changed the way they take their dominations. So that was really nice to say, we may have had a disaster, but we've learned from it, and it's nice to see that they have listened and have changed some things on the way they take articles and stuff now, they're hooking up with other organizations to take those directives, instead of just not taking them at all. So, you know, I'm kinda proud of us, so I did want to say good for us, guys.
Just really quickly, I wanna thank, last time I thanked Councilmember Harrison and Vice Mayor for doing what they were doing, and being out, and when we were in that critical operation, also wanted to thank Councilmember Bennett, being at the briefings here at the PD, was instrumental in helping there, adding some advice and wisdom that I'm sure everybody appreciates, and again, kudos to Joyce for everything you've done at the community center and helping the seniors. When anything like this happens, it upsets everybody's daily routine, and I have a friend who's elderly and struggles with some dementia issues, and having no power, and being in an evacuation area, it was very, very difficult for her family. And I just know there's a lot of families that were dealing with a lot of things, other than just a fire, the fire just exacerbated that. I just wanna thank everybody at the community meetings, you know, we began having those early in the event, and we continued through. Thank you so much for being worldly and being patient, I know emotions, and it could be a very drama-filled fest, but we didn't see that. We saw people that truly came together and cared, when a couple might get a little out of hand, they calmed right down, and I just really appreciate and respect them for that, because there was critical information that needed to be shared, and that could have been missed had the disruption continued. I was lucky enough, we were in the area that was most heavily hit by fire, so we didn't get home as early as some, but when we did get back on Saturday the 14th, we had power shortly thereafter, and I just can't tell you what it's like to come back to a neighborhood where most of the homes are no longer there. And so this recovery is gonna be tough, and I know that we're all gearing up for it. Anybody out there that may have a general contractor's license, or had one, may wanna reactivate that, because we need help, and we're gonna need people, I mean, we're pushing here at the city, so we can get plan checks done, and hopefully start the building as soon as possible, after the cleanup process is done, but we're gonna need some builders, and I know that in our areas surrounding that, at Sonoma County, they're screaming for you as well, but we've got some homes to rebuild, and I'm hopeful that you wanna do your business here in Clear Lake. I wanted to thank the folks and the continuum of care through social services, they went out and did a homeless count- They went out and did a homeless count and tried to provide some much-needed necessities to the folks that are out there in our homeless community. That was done on October twentieth, and I apologize, I was asked to participate in that, but I was meeting with insurance adjusters and cleanup crews and things, trying to deal with some of my own, you know, personal issues. So I wasn't able to end that. But I did make it to the Land Trust workshop on the twentieth. Had a very nice spirited conversation with the folks who want the Lake County Land Trust in identifying areas of the county that could be benefited by their purpose and their devotion to keeping a lot of our wetlands wet and other areas cleaned up. I also wanted to thank Adventist Health, and I'm sure our city clerk will back me up on this. They donated, how many toothbrushes? Three hundred?
Three hundred toothbrushes and probably about five hundred packages of tooth flossers.
So if you come to our Halloween.
City Hall.
City Halloween.
Halloween.
Halloween. Here, you're going to get a toothbrush and some dental floss in your bag, courtesy of Adventist Health. And also I'd like to thank Dr. Mark Cooper for helping to facilitate that and getting those donations down here. Because if you're going to be a bag of candy, want to teach you how to brush your teeth with it. So that's great, and thanks for doing that. Last, I don't know if people are aware of this, I'd like to thank Mr. Becknell and his finance staff. We still offer city loans to folks who need loans, need help. And I sat on the committee for that, which is something that is responsibility of the position. That was on the twenty-fifth, and I just really appreciate what we're doing to help those folks who need help. Maybe getting into a home, first-time home buyer, those type of programs. It's a great program. And last, I want to thank Lieutenant Selly, our acting chief. I got a signed autographed baseball card. I don't know if I can, I'm looking for a Bennett rookie card. Bennett made a rookie card. I'd love to get one of those.
Now I'm jealous. I don't think I'd sign.
It was done in stone.
But all kidding aside, Lieutenant, thank you very much. This is a great program, and I hope the officers watch. They sit down with the kids that they're giving them to, or whoever they may share them with. Go over their safety comments on the back, because it introduces our law enforcement to our communities, and it's a great tool. Thank you so much for bringing it back. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to take this moment and thank our own staff. Often, you know, we've thanked a lot of the first responder agencies, Lakeport Police Department. The list goes on and on that's helped us. But I would be remiss if I did not recognize our own staff, and I'm not talking about the police department. I'm talking about the efforts of code enforcement that helped us man barricades. I'm talking about Councilman Harris, who I asked to go to the EOC at the county, and he readily did that. With Mr. Sabatier, Vice Mayor Sabatier, directing traffic and manning those barricades. You, Mr. Mayor, for coming in and offering your expertise and Nick Bennett. I know that the night that these fires happened, it was very chaotic, and you guys came in and helped us with that. And Joyce, always readily to help at the visitors or the senior center and those types of things. I want to help thank our public work staff, because of their countless hours of manning those barricades. We have very limited staff, especially lately, and we would not be able to do it without those folks. And I just want to say thank you very much. This community is absolutely amazing, and I appreciate every one of you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We appreciate you.
I need to, I need to say something about one of your officers. Unfortunately, one of your officers lost a home in this fire, and the Thursday after our council meeting, I went to Safeway and watched him, still working, still calm, talking to a bunch of young individuals outside of Safeway, having a discussion, asking what they were doing, and still being as professional as absolutely necessary for the job that he does for our city. And I think that shows a lot of who we are, and even with that kind of emotion that I'm sure he's still going through, for him to behave in such a way and still serve his city, I want to commend that.
To continue with what Lieutenant Selly said, you know, we all talk about the staff that's visible, but even the ladies over in City Hall were out here setting up refreshments for those who came in. It was everybody combined. So we need to keep that in mind of what our community, how our community pulls together, and our entire city staff. So all that's important.
Absolutely. And other communities were watching us, and so, well done, everyone. And I'm also, again, so grateful for the county, because people are asking us, okay, well, how did you do this? Because they're looking to us for leadership. Last thing, and it's just, I want to plug it now, and I'll plug it at the next city council meeting. Biden Commissioner Carl Webb, last year, said, why did we retire the flag at Austin Park in October? Why don't we do it on Veterans Day? And that resonated with me, and I want to thank the staff that are supporting this. So on November thirteenth, it's not actually Veterans Day, but we will have the help of some Kona Unified School kids to help catch and retire the flag properly. It's going to be across the street at Austin Park at eleven A M. I'd like to thank Chief Wyatt for amending, for helping me set this up through veterans, asking all the vets to come down and participate in that, hopefully share some information with the youth about why we have Veterans Day and why it's so important, and why that flag means so much to a lot of us. And with that, I can close this meeting, but we do have closed session coming up just after, so we'll start that in just a few minutes. Thank you all very much, and pray for you.